Twenty twenty five meeting to order and I've heard a rumor that it's almost summertime, but it does feel like summer outside. So, thank you all for coming down in the hot weather. We appreciate it. And our first item up is the adoption of the agenda and commissioners, that was sent to you beforehand. And is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Eyes have it. And the agenda is adopted. Now we're on item C, which is the approval of the May twenty second, twenty twenty five minutes. Those were also sent out to you earlier commissioners. And so is there a motion to adopt the minutes? Motion? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Eyes have it. And the minutes are adopted. And then, item D, which is the recognition of our council members. And I saw Council Lady Voe. Council Lady, do you want to speak on the, during the item? Okay. Appreciate you coming down. Good to see you. I didn't see any other council members. We want to make sure we get everybody. Council Lady Gamble, I don't see any other council members. All right, except for you. All right. And so next is item E, which is items for deferral or withdrawal. We'll go ahead and do this.
Thank you. Items for deferral or withdrawal, starting on page three of your agenda. Item number two, twenty twenty one SP zero five nine zero zero three, Ninth and Buchanan amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number four, twenty twenty four SP zero six zero 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 one, sixteen oh nine Fourth Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July twenty fourth meeting. Item number seven, twenty twenty five SP zero zero nine zero zero one, one zero zero four and one one zero four Cass Street. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July twenty fourth meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number eight, twenty twenty five SP zero one zero 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 one, six three zero nine Nolanseville Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. Item number ten, twenty twenty five SP zero two five zero zero one, Radnor Corner SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. Item number twelve, twenty twenty five SP zero two nine zero zero one, Century Summer Brook SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number thirteen, twenty twenty five SP zero three zero 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 one, Altera Nolanseville Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. Item number sixteen, twenty twenty four S one three nine zero zero one, Schuler Clerksville Highway. Staff recommendation is to defer to the July twenty fourth meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number eighteen, twenty twenty four Z zero six nine PR zero zero one. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. Item number nineteen, twenty twenty five SP zero one five zero zero one, Greenside SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. Item number twenty, twenty twenty five Z zero two zero PR zero zero one, Arrington Corner SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. Item number twenty-two, twenty twenty five S zero nine zero 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 one, West Mead Farm Incorporated. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. On page eight of your agenda, item number twenty-three, twenty twenty five S zero nine seven zero zero one, four five four McMurray Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. Item number twenty-four, twenty twenty five S one hundred zero zero one, five zero two five Cherrywood Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. Item number twenty-six, one five one seven eight P zero zero one, Hillcrest Shopping Center Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the June twenty sixth meeting. And that concludes our deferrals or withdrawals.
Thank you. And so commissioners, and make sure I get this correct. The following items are for deferral or withdrawal. And those are items number two, four, seven, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-six. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral or withdrawal. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Eyes have it. And Lisa?
Chair, I did want to note that there were a couple of items that were deferred to the July twenty fourth meeting. And for the viewing public, I did want to let them know that that meeting will be at an alternative location. So that meeting on July twenty fourth will be at the Metro School Board Meeting Room on Bransford Avenue.
Thank you. And we've had the meeting there before. And so, thank you. Perfect. Appreciate that. That's a good reminder for the commissioners, too, because sometimes I, I forget myself. I go to the wrong location. So, thank you. All right. So, next is item F, the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Items noted below on consent will be read aloud at the beginning of the meeting to determine if there is opposition present. If there is opposition present, the items will be heard by the Planning Commission in the order in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So with that, starting on page three of your agenda, item number one, twenty twenty one SP zero four four zero zero two, Germantown Green SP amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page four of your agenda, item number three, twenty twenty four SP zero two zero 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 one, Kane Ridge SP. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Item number five, twenty twenty five SP zero zero five zero zero one, Martin and Merritt. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Item number six, twenty twenty five SP zero zero seven zero zero one, one three nine zero five Old Hickory Boulevard. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. On page five of your agenda, item number nine, twenty twenty five SP zero two one zero zero one zero Old Hickory Boulevard SP. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Item number eleven, twenty twenty five SP zero two six zero zero one, four three two six Maxwell Road. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. On page six of your agenda, item number fourteen, twenty nineteen S zero six eight zero zero five Heritage Greek Phase Five. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the agenda to be heard. Item fifteen, oh, should I just pull it? Okay. We will put item fifteen on the agenda to be heard as well. Agenda number, item number seventeen, two thousand and three UD zero zero three zero one one Ridgeview UDO Section Six and Seven Amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, item number twenty-one, twenty twenty-two S one seven one zero zero four, Westbrook Point. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page eight of your agenda, item number twenty-five, twenty twenty five S one zero three zero zero one, Una Antioch Pike Lot Line Shift. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number twenty-seven A, one five eight seven seven P zero zero seven Hickory Hollow Retail Amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number twenty-seven B, twenty twenty five Z one five one PR zero zero one. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number twenty-eight, one six one seven five P zero zero one, five six two Rosedale Avenue. This is a PUD cancellation. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number twenty-nine, twenty twenty five Z zero four two PR zero zero one. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number thirty, twenty twenty five Z zero four eight PR zero zero one. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number thirty-one, twenty twenty five Z zero five zero PR zero zero one. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. And lastly, on page ten of your agenda, item number thirty-two, twenty twenty five Z zero five two PR zero zero one. Is there anyone here in opposition of this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. I will now run through all of our consent items with their full captions as legal information. As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within sixty days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Starting on page three of your agenda, item number one, twenty twenty one SP zero four four zero zero two, Germantown Green SP amendment. This is a request to amend a specific plan on property located at Third Avenue North to permit a mixed-use development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page six of your agenda, item number seventeen, two thousand and three UD zero zero three zero one one Ridgeview UDO Section Six and Seven Amendment. This is a request to amend a portion of the preliminary plan for property located at Eagleview Boulevard, unnumbered, Zone MUL and RM nine, and within the Ridgeview Urban Design Overlay District, to permit three hundred and seventy-six multifamily residential units. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page seven of your agenda, item number twenty-one, twenty twenty-two S one seven one zero zero four, Westbrook Point. This is a request for a final plat approval to create sixty-nine single-family residential cluster lots on property located at eight eight four zero Highway seventy, Zone RS fifteen. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page eight of your agenda, item number twenty-five, twenty twenty five S one zero three zero zero one, Una Antioch Pike Lot Line Shift. This is a request for final plat approval to create one lot and shift lot lines on properties located at two four one six Una Antioch Pike and one one two one Remington Trace, Zone AR two A and RS ten. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions, including an exception to Section three dash five point two point D point one for lot frontage. Item number twenty-seven A, one five eight seven seven P zero zero seven Hickory Hollow Retail Amendment. This is a request to amend a portion of a planned unit development overlay district on a portion of a property located at seven seven one Bell Road, Zoned R eight and located within a corridor design overlay to permit non-residential uses. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number twenty-seven B, twenty twenty five Z zero five one PR zero zero one. This is a request to rezone from R eight to MULA for property located at seven seven one Bell Road and within a planned unit development district. Staff's recommendation is approval if the associated case is approved and disapproval if the associated case is not approved. Item number twenty-eight, one six one seven five P zero zero one, five six two Rosedale Avenue, PUD cancellation. This is a request to cancel a portion of a planned unit development on property located at five six two Rosedale Avenue, Zoned OR twenty. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item number twenty-nine, twenty twenty five Z zero four two PR zero zero one. This is a request to rezone from AR two A to RM nine ANS for property located at three zero eight, three eight zero two Pinhook Road. Staff's recommendation is to approve. Item number thirty, twenty twenty five Z zero four eight PR zero zero one. This is a request to rezone from OR twenty to IWD for a portion of a property located at forty-one Rachel Drive. Staff's recommendation is to approve. And under letter H, other business. Item number thirty-three, bonus height certification memo for one one two one Grundy Street Hotel. And item number thirty-six, to accept the Director's Report and approve administrative items.
Thank you. And commissioners, we'll go through these slow because there were a lot of changes on here. So, under the consent agenda, these are the following items that will be passed all at one time. Items number one, seventeen, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-seven A, twenty-seven B, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-three, and thirty-six. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the items to be passed on the consent agenda all at one time. Is there a motion? And a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. And those items are adopted, which I believe, and make sure I'm correct, so we're going to hear nine items to be considered on public hearing. And here are the following items to be considered. Items number three, five, six, nine, eleven, fourteen, fifteen, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
That's correct.
All right, commissioners, we will go ahead and get started. But before we get started, if everybody would quickly leave the room as we conduct our meeting, not everyone, all those that have business that has already been resolved, if you could, that way we can continue the meeting. Also, just a reminder, please silence your phones, which I need to do myself, so that we respect everybody that's speaking. And then, just, many of you have been down here. We appreciate everybody coming down. This is just a reminder that we are always, we always treat each other with respect. This is a business meeting, and we want to hear from everybody. And so that's why we have the public hearing. And so we respect everybody's time. And just a reminder, some of you have been down here before, some of you have never been here. And so we're a friendly group. We're all volunteers, other than the staff, on the Commission. And so we appreciate, we're all Nashvillians like you. And so, the process goes like this. We'll have the staff, we'll do the presentation. The applicant will have ten minutes. They can save two minutes for rebuttal. Then everybody that wants to speak in favor of it will line everybody up behind the podium, and then we'll take everybody that wants to speak in opposition. Everybody gets two minutes, and the clock is right there. And so we appreciate that. And then, the applicant will have a rebuttal, if they have enough time. And then the council will recognize the council member, and then we'll close the public hearing. And that's when the Commission will discuss and debate the item. So, we appreciate everybody coming down. And so let's go ahead and get started. Item number three.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Laszlo Martone, and this is item number three, the Kane Ridge SP. And the request is to rezone to SP to permit fifty-eight single-family lots and seventy-four multifamily residential units. And staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and to disapprove without all conditions. And also note that I've included a memo that's before you, that really speaks to just, we've clarified some language, but that was in the original published F report. That's within the body of the report. There's no additional conditions, but just wanted to make you aware of that. So, the subject site consists of thirty-nine point two-two-seven acres across two parcels. And these are located along the east side of Kane Ridge Road. The site has been zoned agricultural residential since nineteen seventy-four, and is currently undeveloped and heavily forested. The site has approximately seven hundred feet of frontage on Kane Ridge Road, and currently has its access on Kane Ridge Road, which is an arterial boulevard and a major and collector street plan. Adjacent zoning includes single-family residential to the north, one- and two-family residential to the east, and agricultural residential to the south and east. Along the, I'll note that along the site's northern boundary, there's an existing access drive that extends beyond the site, which provides access to an off-site metro water facility. The two primary policies on this site are suburban neighborhood evolving and conservation policy. The suburban neighborhood evolving policy is intended to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices. The conservation policy on the site is associated with a stream buffer that runs along the southern property boundary. And the site also contains, you'll see a little orange section on the frontage. That is a small portion of suburban neighborhood center policy. That is along the Kane Ridge Road frontage. And just to catch you up on some of the case history, this was previously presented at the September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting, where a public hearing was held and closed. Following the hearing, the Planning Commission made a motion to approve the plan that you see on the screen here, with conditions. And at the time of approval, the plan included a hundred and twenty single-family lots and approximately sixteen point seven five acres of open space. During the council legislative review process, changes to the plan were requested by the council member. And due to the scope of the changes, the plan was referred back to the Planning Commission for additional consideration. Modifications to the plan, to the revised plan consist of the inclusion of additional open space, the replacement of a portion of single-family lots for townhomes. And we're going to take a look at that revised plan on the next slide. So, on the screen, you can see the full length of the latest plan. Overall, the proposed SP would permit a mixed residential development with fifty-eight single-family lots and seventy-four multifamily residential units, for a total of a hundred and thirty-two units. The site will be accessed by an entrance along Kane Ridge Road, and what will provide new public roads internal to the site. The plan includes streetscape improvements according to the MCSP along the site's frontage, and the internal sidewalk network on the new public roads will connect to that, those improvements. Both the single-family lots and the townhomes will have a maximum building height of three stories and forty-five feet. And for corner lots, the plan includes a standard that will require additional architectural detailing on street-facing façades. This plan includes fifteen point two-nine acres of undisturbed natural open space and ten point three-nine acres of passive open space, accounting for approximately sixty-five percent of the site's total acreage. And I'll note that the northernmost cul-de-sac includes a driveway, ramp, and emergency access gate to access the emergency access drive at the northernmost point of the site. So, reviewing the plan against the T three NE policy, staff found that it met several goals. The plan proposes a hundred thirty-two units at a density of approximately three point five units an acre, which is within the low to moderate density range that the policy supports. It meets the goal of providing more housing choices, as it provides both a mix of single-family lots and townhome units. The plan does propose smaller lot sizes. However, the policy is supportive of, you know, smaller lot sizes when development is grouped and organized in a manner that preserves environmentally sensitive features. As noted, a large portion of the overall site is shown to remain undisturbed. Although the SP includes solely residential uses, the plan includes streetscape improvements along Kane Ridge Road, which is consistent with the T three NC policy, which is that small portion along the frontage. And as noted previously, the plan avoids the stream buffer, and it balances tree preservation throughout the site, which beats, meets the goals of the conservation policy. The site meets the goals of the associated policies and provides a moderately dense residential development. And therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions, including the memo before you.
Thank you. And commissioners, we'll go ahead and open this item up for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Oh, come on up. You got ten minutes? Welcome. And state your name, and we appreciate it. And then, if you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, my name is Drew Hardison. Yeah, so, as Laszlo had said, this is a multifamily development with townhomes and single families. So, we have a hundred and thirty-two. We've worked together and worked with the conservation development for this. And so we've conserved an additional fifteen acres of the site. So, we feel like we've gotten a good product here. We've had numerous meetings with community members, and that's why we're being referred back to the Commission, something that the community can support. So, that is, that is the reason we're back, and that's, that's what the new plan is. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal, if you need to use. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Welcome.
It's on.
Oh, it's on?
No, okay.
Come on up.
Twanachik, sorry, Mr. Hardison, to make you get up and speak, but it was really important for us to come back tonight and tell you why we are supporting this. This plan started out with us having so many concerns about ciltation, about the natives. There is a large number of shagmark hickory on the site. We know that there are caves nearby. We know that the tri-colored bat is in those caves. It has, the headwaters of Turkey Creek, so many things. And we were a little freaked out when we initially saw this because of problems we had had with developments nearby. This developer has been a model for working with us. We've had numerous meetings with Council Member Lee that were led by her. And we've also had smaller meetings where that this developer has come to agreements about planting with natives, about invasives, management plans in perpetuity for this site. It will have walking trails that will connect to the adjacent site that's going to be along I twenty-four. It brings the housing in tighter together and clusters it up, which preserves more of the site for Kane Ridge. It has more diversity of housing. And it's, it's just preserving so many of the things that we think provides the balance to the Kane Ridge area and makes it continue to be a place that people want to live. So, the developer also said something really important to us, which is, doing it this way is saving them money, but it's also saving things for the community. So, we just thought it was really important to kind of put our money, our mouth where our money is, mouth, money where the mouth is, and come back and tell you that sometimes communication works, and it results in a really good product. So, just want to say thank you. Thank you to Mr. Hardison and Council Member Lee and the other community members. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Rebuttal, I don't believe. Need a rebuttal? No? Okay. Just making sure, you know, we got to go through, the attorney says I got to go through the process. So, you know. All right. So, and the council member's not here. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Vice Chair, you?
I, I think this seems like a case to support and move forward. I do appreciate hearing that the process has worked well, and applaud the developer for engaging with the community. I, I will be the first to admit, I was expecting opposition. So, it's great to hear. I, I now I remember this case, and I remember the caves and the water, and really appreciate hearing that the developer was able to find a creative solution that seems to work better for that, preserving the important environmental features and works better for the community. So, I support staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And we'll see. Is any other discussion? Seeing none. Vice Chair, you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation with all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Eyes have it. And item number three is adopted. All right. We are on to item number five.
Okay, this is item number five on tonight's agenda. This is a request to rezone properties along Merritt Avenue and Hamilton Avenue from IWD and RM twenty ANS to specific plan to permit a mixed-use development. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site consists of five parcels. The northern three parcels along Merritt Avenue are zoned IWD. The southern two parcels along Hamilton Avenue are zoned RM twenty ANS. Neighboring properties include a variety of zoning districts and land uses, including industrial, commercial, multifamily residential, single-family residential, and office uses. The area shown on this slide and the red outline is also located within the Wedgewood Houston Chestnut Hill Urban Design Overlay. Chestnut Hill Urban Design Overlay, which provides for design-specific guidelines. The site is located within several different land use policy areas. The northern three parcels on the site along Merritt Avenue are within the T four urban mixed use neighborhood policy with a small portion in conservation policy. The southern two parcels along Hamilton Avenue are within the T four urban neighborhood evolving policy area. The T four urban mixed use neighborhood policy intends to create urban neighborhoods with high intensity development, increased levels of multimodal connectivity and urban design form. The T four urban neighborhood evolving policy intends to create and enhance urban residential neighborhoods that provide more housing choices, improved connectivity and moderate to high density development patterns. The conservation policy on the site is limited to an area of steep slopes that are currently controlled by a retaining wall. The site is also located within two sub-districts of the Wedgwood Houston Chestnut Hill Small Area Plan. The northern parcels are located within Sub District One, while the southern parcels are located within Sub District Two A. The Small Area Plan identifies Sub District One as appropriate for a higher density mix of uses, while Sub District Two A is appropriate for a mixture of housing types. The proposed site plan consists of three buildings, including an existing building to be retained, identified as the vintage millworks building on this plan. Located at the northwest corner of the site is a seven-story building with a maximum height of seventy-five feet and utilized for hotel and non-residential uses. Located in the central portion of the site is a four-story building with a height of forty-eight feet to be used for a maximum of one hundred fifty multifamily residential units. The site would have access from two locations, a primary access along Martin Street that would connect to a below-grade parking garage and a loading access along Merritt Avenue. Additionally, the existing site access and parking associated with the vintage millworks would be retained. The plan proposes streetscape improvements, including sidewalks along all frontages. Located throughout the site are open space areas, including publicly accessible open spaces along Hamilton Avenue. The plan proposes a range of building heights from three to seven stories. The Small Area Plan recommends heights of three to four stories, but includes provisions for when additional height may be appropriate, including providing active uses and enhanced streetscaping, a project combined with adaptive reuse of the other parts of the site, accompanied by urban industrial uses and located in a lower-lying area. The topography of the site slopes downward with the highest portions of the site at the southeast corner, which is the corner at Martin and Merritt Street and the lowest portions of the site, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. The highest portions of the site are at the southeast corner along Hamilton Avenue and the lowest portion of the site is at the northwest corner at the corner of Merritt Avenue and Martin Street. This results in a substantial grade change across the site. The northwest corner of the site is approximately forty feet lower than the northeast corner of the site. Additionally, other surrounding SP zone properties have building heights of five to six stories. Excuse me. The existing industrial and commercial buildings on the site, known as the vintage millworks, will be preserved in this plan, providing for adaptive reuse of the structure. These factors would contribute to supporting additional height at this location. Staff also conducted an analysis on the proposal based on the different land use policies on the site. For clarity, the site analysis is divided based on sub-district. Sub District One includes the northern portions of the site, which is within the T four urban mixed use neighborhood policy. In reviewing the plan against guidance in the T four urban mixed use neighborhood policy, staff found that the plan incorporates the design characteristics of the policy by providing a high-density development pattern, including a mix of uses and urban designed form and improved pedestrian connectivity. Sub District Two includes the southern portions of the site, which is within the T four urban neighborhood evolving policy. In reviewing the plan against this policy, staff found that the plan provides a moderate density development pattern with a development intensity consistent with an urban neighborhood and a building design consistent with an urban form. Sub District Two is also within the Wedgwood Houston Chestnut Hill Urban Design Overlay or U D O. The U D O provides guidance for building design, including heights, material, maximum heights, material standards and setbacks. The proposed plan incorporates several characteristics of this overlay, including heights consistent with the U D O guidance, building materials and articulation requirements. The U D O also has requirements for a contextual setback for street-facing facades. The proposed plan has a setback that is closer than the required contextual setback. Under the U D O guidelines, a modification to the standard is permitted under certain conditions, including a site's location at the corner of two streets and setbacks of existing buildings along the entire block face or nearby area. Several of these conditions would warrant a modification to the standard along the Hamilton Avenue frontage. The plan proposes a varied setback along Hamilton Avenue with only a portion of this facade located closer to the street than the minimum required contextual setback. Additionally, this site's location at a corner and an SP zone property across the street with closer setbacks would support a smaller contextual setback. With this, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you, and so commissioners will open this item for public hearing as the applicant in the room. Hello, welcome, and you have ten minutes and come up, tell us who you are and you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal.
I'll save a couple of minutes at the end, if that's all right. Chairman Atkins, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Andrew Donches from Samara Road. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. Samara Road is a Nashville-based real estate owner, operator, developer with projects across the country, but largely focused on Nashville as our home. We have several significant projects underway in both Wedgwood Houston, as well as the Gulch and other parts of Nashville. Our company has been investing and working in Nashville since 2018 and I personally have lived in Nashville for about five years now. After relocating my family from New York, I can say with a high level of confidence I'm not moving. My wife probably won't let me. She loves it here as well and it's not hard to see why. Calling Nashville our home, I personally and our company as a whole takes seriously the responsibility of living, working, investing and building in our community here in Nashville. It's always a privilege to work with Metro Planning to help shape the future growth of our city and to be before the planning commission this evening, talking about an exciting project like our proposal to redevelop a, a long vacant and blighted site at the corner of Martin and Merritt and Wedgwood Houston. This proposed development before you for consideration this evening is a product of significant collaboration and tremendous amount of work, time and effort by a huge number of community stakeholders. In addition to months of collaboration, refinement and work with both Metro Planning and Endot, we have hosted over a dozen community meetings on this project dating back to March of 2023 and the most recent being hosted by Councilwoman Voe in April of this year. Over two years of collaboration, refinement, adjustments and admittedly some concessions on our part to scale back from the original proposal has resulted in what we believe will be a contextually appropriate, thoughtfully designed, hospitality-anchored mixed-use project that both artfully blends into the character of the neighborhood, aligns with the community policy and planning guidance, meets both the future needs of the neighborhood and accomplishes many of the city's stated goals for smart growth, including the need for more housing, investments in infrastructure, as well as vehicular pedestrian safety improvements. Through this collaborative process dating back over two years, we have made refinements and adjustments based on feedback from both the community and Metro Planning to the project. We've reduced its building height, its scale and the setbacks. They've all been reduced and adjusted based on direct feedback from Metro as well as the community to minimize the impact of the structure and the mass on the surrounding neighborhood. We've reduced the residential unit count from originally proposed two hundred to one hundred and fifty units max. We've refined loading, access and circulation to minimize the impact of building operations on neighboring residents. We've proposed an expansion of infrastructure improvements to extend beyond the boundaries of the property and project. We've also included in the SP the already completed adaptive reuse of the former vintage millworks property to ensure it remains a neighborhood-focused, single-story retail hub at the expense of significant future development potential. There's almost no facet or detail of this project that has not been discussed, reviewed, adjusted or refined with community and Metro input. It's truly a result of a community-based approach to development and we believe will be a great project that will meet the needs of the growing community in Wedgwood Houston and meets the city's goals for continued smart growth. Big or small, we understand the impact these types of projects can have on the day-to-day lives of our neighbors and take that responsibility of building in this community seriously. I believe that through a collaborative effort, we've put together a thoughtful proposal to redevelop a long-blighted site and continue to invest in the long-term growth and character of both Westwood Houston and Nashville. This project has been designed and refined with significant community and planning input. We've added to the vibrant, it will add to the vibrant growth of Wedgwood Houston with a much-needed boutique hotel plus new residences. Investing in infrastructure, multimodal improvements through a new we-go stop and pedestrian and vehicular safety improvements, both on and off-site, will address the character of the neighborhood as well as the future growth needs and goals of a neighborhood in the city and aligns with community policy and planning guidance with the support of Metro Planning. I want to thank everyone from the community who has spent their time and energy to collaborate with us on this project. Thank you to Metro Planning staff who have spent months on this project with us and lastly, I want to thank Councilwoman Voe for her dedication to ensuring that this proposal is a result of a truly collaborative and inclusive process. And thank you to the commission for your time this evening. I'd ask that a proposal for redevelopment of this site at Martin and Merritt be considered for approval by the planning commission.
And good afternoon. He really does talk that fast all the time.
I'm still a New Yorker.
I'm, I'm a little slower. Good afternoon. I'm Kim Hawkins with Hawkins Partners Landscape Architects and I want to run through how this project meets policy and achieves broader community goals. So of the four-acre site, just over one acre has been dedicated for the adaptive reuse of vintage millworks, a historic building that serves as an asset to this neighborhood and eliminates future development, currently allowed to be about five to six stories. The developers also provided over a half an acre of public space for neighborhood pedestrian connectivity, as well as a neighborhood park along Hamilton. Those two elements provide over forty percent of the overall site area toward goals that were identified in the 2019 Wedgwood Houston Chestnut Hill planning study. Further, the streetscape improvements include a half-mile of new sidewalks and that includes several off-site gap connections where none exist today to provide safer neighborhood connectivity. We also really embrace our location with a five to ten-minute walk to four major we-go lines and have included bus stop and pedestrian intersection improvements based on we-go recommendations so that we can be more transit-oriented. In the site development, Matt mentioned that we straddle two policies and therefore have two sub-districts. Sub District One, the hotel and retail portion, is within the MPC Tier One Center and T four MU policy for urban mixed use. It's immediately adjacent to high-intensity development at the Finery, T three and twelve sixty Martin that have heights of six to five stories respectively and up to eighty-eight feet in height. This development supports the viability of nearby consumer businesses which have had private and public investment over the past several years in the area. The height within the sub-district is a maximum of seven stories at that lowest corner on the site of Martin and Merritt and it's really nested into the grade to reduce the height to four stories as it transitions along Merritt up to the mill, the adaptive reuse area. And in Sub District Two, the residential portion, which is identified as a transition zone within Nashville Next, because it abuts a Tier One Center and it's noted as a residential core of Wedgwood Houston in the 2019 study, which promotes a mixture of housing types. Per Nashville Next, the heights of four stories are supported based on proximity to Tier One Centers, adjacent mixed-use policy and supportive infrastructure. Based on the project's commitment to adaptive reuse, public open space, community connectivity and a vibrant mix of uses, including housing, as well as consistency with MPC policies, the 2021 U D O and the 2019 Wedgwood Houston Small Area Plan, we concur with planning's recommendation for approval and urge your support. I will also want to thank Councilman Voe, staff of Metro Planning and Endot, as well as community members, for a whole lot of patience and engagement through this process and we would like to retain two minutes for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. And anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up if y'all will line up behind the microphone. If you're wishing to speak in support, that'd be great. Please state your name. Thank you for coming.
Hi, y'all. My name is Neil Cornetik. I live at seventeen oh four Martin Street. Tough week this week. You guys all are tasked to deal with housing and infrastructure. It's a real chicken and egg situation. I want to focus on the infrastructure piece of it. On Monday, when I was sitting up here at Traffic and Parking, we had public comment as well and the public comment was to hear from people who had someone killed in their neighborhood, killed walking in a crosswalk. A crosswalk that is supposed to be upgraded by Endot. Soon, maybe? I walk these streets with my wife, my daughter, my dogs, my friends, my families, my neighbors. Martin and Hamilton, I put in a ticket to have it repainted and Endot responds with, well, we have to wait until we have funding. We always have to wait. And the only opportunity that we have is developments like this to help build infrastructure, to build safety into these neighborhoods, so our neighborhood doesn't have to handle the same type of impact that other people have. I urge you all to push this forward. As other council members have said, it doesn't have to be like this. And I think you should push it to them to make that decision. The trade-off here, twenty extra hotel units, and I think we should be willing to make that trade-off to have safe infrastructure in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Hi there, everyone. Good evening, council members. My name's Ernest Morgan. I live in Wedgwood Houston. I've been there for about five years now and I live on Merritt, Merritt Avenue. I'm a, full transparency, past board member of the SNAP organization and have started some other neighborhood organizations to rally around, just getting people together and knowing each other and being the community that we want to be. I'm probably going to go off script because I, two minutes is what I'm trying to stick to, but one of the things that, that I've been really moved by is someone that's lived in our neighborhood for his entire life. His name is James. He's seventy-plus. He won't give me the actual number, but he's seventy-plus. He's never lived more than a mile away from where he does right now and each one of those homes have been in Wedgwood Houston. I sat on his front porch with him over the weekend and he's in a real situation right now because when he retired from the drugstore that's on Chestnut, his taxes have gone up more so than his income has. In fact, now it's at a point where it's, it's almost half of his income. And he was talking to me about having to perhaps leave the neighborhood. And the irony of the situation is he's one of the founders of SNAP and, and that troubles him because he's like, the neighborhood that we have today is the neighborhood that I wanted, that, the one that we were fighting for, for all these years and now I'm in a situation where I have to move out and I'm about to get emotional, I'm sorry. You know, he may have to move out and he goes back to, I think that you guys are fighting the wrong fight. We're, we're beating developers up that are trying to do good things in the community and he's like, people look at me and think that I'm anti-development. He's like, absolutely not. He's like, the way that it works in Nashville right now, to the point of the gentleman just in front of me, is we don't get a lot of infrastructure changes until we have development in that area. And when we look at this particular development and the gap between moving forward or not, it's troubling. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Welcome. My name's Jonathan Ruff. I live in Little Hamilton. I've had a house there since 2017. I previously lived in Chicago and I previously lived in England. Oops. All my notes just disappeared. Basically, I would like to support this. Been a supporter of this since the first meeting that Samara Road had with the community. I've attended a number of other meetings as we've addressed issues and concerns that the community has brought up. They're the only developer that I can say has truly engaged with the Wedgwood Houston community to try to resolve and make and improve the things that they're doing and address some of the issues. Secondly, my daughter is twenty-six. She went to Belmont. She went to University of Tennessee. She is now an ER nurse at Vanderbilt. She has finally been able to afford an apartment in Wedgwood Houston. She wants to see this sort of community, this capability come there so more of her colleagues, more of the nurses and community people can move into there with economical housing. I think the other part is we need safer sidewalks. There aren't sidewalks there. I understand why. It was an industrial area. I like the fact that they have kept the millwork, they've kept some of that industrial culture there, they've kept the heritage of that area there, as Ernest talked about James. But we need sidewalks. We need improved parking. If you want to drive down Merritt Hill on a daytime and see the two rows of cars down there, their model pulls those cars off of what is the road and pushes them further into the site, into the lot that they're building. That means that they're taking space that they could develop and putting cars in there to get them off the streets, to make the streets safer for us that are driving through. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Come on up.
Hello. My name is Alexander Janko. We own six-
We own six zero one Merritt Street, which is the commercial property across from this proposed development. We're new to Nashville. We came in 2022 and are new actually to this project. We first heard about it when we went to the DISC Insider Community Meeting. I'd just like to echo, I think, two of the previous comments about public safety and really focus on the sidewalks. If anybody goes down there when there's a GeoDIS park game, Wedgewood Houston has now become the place where a lot of people park, I think, to save money, and they will drink in the local places where they can drink, and then they walk to GeoDIS. And I'm concerned that they're walking in the streets. They're walking along Merritt, they're walking along Martin. And the fact that this developer has gone to the extent to create sidewalks, which is a public safety benefit to all of us, I think is going to be huge and potentially avert any accidents. For us, the idea of Wedgewood Houston continuing to develop is wonderful, of course. I think that the idea of a we-go transit stop in Wedgewood Houston would be fantastic to help with the transit issues between downtown and other parts of Nashville. So I urge you all to look at it holistically and to look at the public safety benefits as well, because when a private party is willing to put money into what could potentially be public dollars, that doesn't have to be spent. I think that's valuable. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks. Hi, Greg Watson. I live at six oh seven A Moore Avenue. Moved to Nashville about a year ago and absolutely love it. Maybe not so much in the summer versus Chicago, but the other nine months, it's great. Anyway, I've got three kind of personal reasons to support it. I mean, one, it's a very thoughtful designed development that is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood that replaces a complete eyesore. It's a barbed-wire former trailer park in the middle of a developing vibrant neighborhood. I think the second one, which is probably the most important, which has already been stated, is I walk every day down Martin Street, which is one of the main thoroughfares, into sort of the downtown Wedgewood Houston area. There's no sidewalks, none. And when it rains, it's like just a mudslide coming down. So that's just really not what we should be having in the neighborhood. And then the, kind of the third piece is, I've got a friend here in the back in the room that is opening a local business in the downtown Wedgewood Houston area. We need more density and tourism dollars to make the local businesses sustainable, and this helps to bring that to the table. I'd say the other kind of reasons for support is more process and procedure. When you have the planning council that recommends approval, you have Samara Road, a developer that has been incredibly collaborative. I've been here just for a year, and I've been to four meetings. They've made countless revisions to address the community concerns. And then when you look at the quantifiable public support, I've gone onto the website to look at the letters. It's two-to-one in terms of unique people writing letters in support versus letters in opposition. And I think there's a petition with eighty-three signatures of people living in the neighborhood that really want to see this for kind of all the reasons people have stated. So really hope that we can approve this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dwayne Cutler, it's in four oh nine Merritt Avenue. I live just up the street from this development site, pass it every single day. Wanted to come here and express my support for the project. Want to commend the developer and the development team for a thoughtful, thorough, collaborative effort. I mean, they've spent a few years now going back and forth with two different council members and two different community organizations and a ton of adjacent neighbors. So to say that they've been engaged is an understatement. A lot of people spoke before me and pointed out the positive elements of this, and I'm just really going to echo some of that. This development, it's a thoughtful, delicate transition between the residential neighborhood and the commercial section of this neighborhood. It adds significantly to the neighborhood. It adds a ton of infrastructure, which we all say over and over we desperately need in this city. It also adds a lot of housing, which we always hear we desperately need in this city, and this neighborhood is set up to support that additional housing. Again, does so in a very thoughtful way. It activates the streets, so instead of having this massive gap in this neighborhood's fabric, we now have this engaging experience, this protective experience that allows people to move about the neighborhood safely. I think a lot of people on both sides are very frustrated with the process. It just doesn't seem like this should drag out this long. I would urge you all to review it against the policy. Your staff has done so, and they recommend support. It appears to me, as a layman, that it meets the policy, so I would ask you all to move it forward to the council and have the council weigh the pros and cons. They can make amendments as they see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone else? I'll make sure we get everybody. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up if everybody would line up behind the microphone. We really appreciate it and state your name. Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Thomas Ross. My wife and I live at fourteen oh five Pillow Street, which, if you look, is the house that's directly adjacent to the right of the Vintage Mill Works. And that's notable because that, to my knowledge, is the only place that's currently occupied by any tenant or business at the moment. It's a gym called B.C. Block that opened in February, and since they opened in February, we've had nothing but problems with them violating noise ordinances beginning at five o'clock in the morning, playing extremely loud music. It wakes us up in the morning. It disturbs our neighbor who's also been there from the sixties. He told us also during the construction renovations, there was debris and trash blowing into his yard that he brought to the tenant's attention that was never addressed. He had to clean it up himself. And all of this is extremely concerning. We've had to file noise complaints. We've had to call the police. We've had to retain an attorney to engage in pre-litigation discussions with the tenant there, and the situation still has not been fully addressed. And what's most disturbing is that during our discussions with the tenant, we found that despite the fact that he had prior issues of the same nature at his other location, they took no steps to soundproof that area to ensure that it wouldn't disturb the residential areas next to it. And what's clear then is that the developers that leased it to him have taken no steps, have done nothing to ensure due diligence, to make sure that their tenants are in compliance with local regulations regarding sound ordinances. And with hotels and multifamily units going in there, that's an increasing concern, and I don't believe that there's any indication that they've done any due diligence to ensure their current tenant is complying with regulations and ordinances. And so until they can demonstrate an ability to ensure that their tenants are in compliance with regulations and ordinances, we would ask that the committee not proceed with any granting of further dispensations. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Vince. I live at the six hundred block of Hamilton. I want to be very clear, opposition is not the accurate label for this. I'm a concerned neighbor with experience living through three major developments adjacent to my home. My neighbors and I are not anti-developer nor anti-growth. We want to have informed meetings and the ability to have proper discourse about the final proposed plan. All neighbors, for or against, want the same thing, a safe neighborhood and responsible development. Samara Road claims that they have the neighbors' best interest in mind, but they didn't hold a meeting after submitting their final plan. Option presented in previous meetings only benefited them, meaning neighbors didn't get the full picture. For example, in the SNAP meeting held in February, Samara told neighbors that Endot wouldn't let them build an alley exiting on Merritt. After asking Endot for this information, I found out that not only is it possible, it was preferred. The neighborhood deserves the ability to discuss this final plan. You heard about significant revisions over a two-year period. Those revisions should be expected developing such a unique property during a planning stage. Being in a transitional zone requires more in-depth discussion. Lastly, most of the neighbors that approve this live further away from the project from those that have concerns. Just as if the Moore Avenue I sixty-five exit was going to be built, Moore Avenue's opinions matter more than the rest of the neighborhood. This is not majority rule. It's about prioritizing the voices of those whose lives will be most directly affected. We're not saying no. We're just asking for a deferral, given the scale of this project and its significant impact on our neighborhood and its neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you in advance for giving him a moment to share with you my input and the input of my direct neighbors. I live the closest to where this is all going on at five forty-two Hamilton, so literally two lots from where it's going to be built. All of us that live on the five hundred block of Hamilton north there, the alley is how we access our driveway and our home. So the neighbor attached to me have a three and a seven-year-old. I don't think that this kind of traffic back and forth in the alley is safety for them. I'm very concerned about damage on our property being so close to what's going to be a lot of blasting, a lot of heavy equipment. It's going to potentially damage our home. In fact, my other neighbor has had damage to their brand-new driveway take place due to heavy equipment having to back into it because it's so close to the dead end behind the mill. And nothing has been done to address and follow up with repairing the damage on his property. So that makes me very concerned about what could happen with cracks in our wall, foundations to our home, et cetera, when you're thirty and forty yards from where this blasting's going to go. I'm all for growth. I'd love to see what was once the trailer park be similar to the other property that was expanded on Martin and Hamilton. Not even thirty units, whereas this is a hundred and fifty additional units of residential, let alone the hotel, which will have a rooftop bar, partying until eleven o'clock at night. It would be very hard for us from a long-term perspective. So I do appreciate some of the adjustments that have been done, but long-term, there's just real concern about those of us who live so close to this and the impact of the traffic and the noise and the safety. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hey, friends. I'm KK. I'm at five thirty Hamilton Avenue and have been so for about seventeen years, and I'm lucky to have found a place where I could learn to love and care and feel responsible for the world around me. I've been involved in the music and art, dance party, food, bar scene in Nashville for a while, and I think those are aspects of the city that help the people to create our culture and the reasons actually why people decide to move here and to visit. I find it a little difficult to protect character in a neighborhood where it's not quite yet fully developed, but I don't know if valuing profit when the builder's not super yet connected is true character. And I'm also a little hesitant because of the use of one individual in the neighborhood that pretends to shape the plan, kind of through lies, and acts, pretends like he's acting on behalf of the neighbors. And I think in that, in theory, is actually just the builder shaping his own plan. There are people in favor of this plan that are also seeking to develop parts of North Nashville, and a decision to rezone some of this residential pieces of these lots will undoubtedly be referred to in the near future with greater negative consequences for the communities, and those builders and their attorneys and accountants are watching. I'd love to continue being part of a city that has sweet places where people aren't admitted because of their wealth, but because those are the sweet places where we create our music together and our culture thrives. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name's Rick Sedowski. I live at five two three Moore Avenue. My biggest concern about this development is really looking at the traffic and the traffic flow within where we are today. Yes, I am all support of sidewalks being developed, and I think it's a shame that that has not happened until this conversation now because people's lives are at risk. But the traffic that will be caused by this development already, already on Martin Avenue, when you try and get down that street any between three and five P.M., it's a backup. You can't even get down to the sixty-five, and then you've got stadium over there and everything else going on. Parking is impossible. They fill up the streets, there's nowhere to go. They park illegally on all the streets, and this is going to bring in cars. This is going to bring in vehicles, and that is going to make that area very dangerous, even with the sidewalks. And that's my biggest concern. And again, I'm recently moved here from New York, so fellow New Yorker, and my whole point of this being built is, I like the concept, but I am concerned about the safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else? And council lady, we'll do the rebuttal, and then you'll be last. We save the best for last. Two-minute rebuttal.
So I'll try to get through this quick. The comment about the Endot in the alley, we have worked very closely with Endot on a number of options in the plan that we submitted as a result of that collaboration. There are a number of options explored for how to service this building. In the final version, there is no connection to this building, services, garage, otherwise, from that existing alley. So there would be no traffic from this building that utilizes that alley, which was a change from the original proposal based on community feedback. That alleyway and all its services now happens off of Merritt, which was part of a collaborative effort with the community, with Endot, with planning, to make sure that we addressed that concern and did it in a thoughtful and artful way that minimizes impact on those residents, which we believe we've done. On the comment on the rooftop bar, we are cognizant of that as well, and as part of this, we've agreed that we're not going to build any lights for this project. I mean, the pool can't be open at night, and the rooftop bar, by extension, as part of the hotel operation, will follow suit. Operational hours will be adjusted. We don't think this is going to be a very loud, raucous bar. It's part of a very, what should be a high-end boutique hotel, and we think as such, it will operate as an extension of the hotel for guests, not necessarily as a standalone bar or club like others that are not part of hotels. We are aware of the issues with some of the tenants, including B.C. Fitness. We are taking steps to address those issues, both through mechanisms in our leases, et cetera, et cetera, as well as forcing them to make significant improvements in their space. Those things don't happen overnight. Tenants build out their space. We don't necessarily have an entire say in what they do and don't do, but we are aware of those issues, and we are addressing them operationally with our tenants. And lastly, on the traffic comment, we have done, obviously, as you know, a complete traffic study for this project, which has been submitted as part of the SP. The hotel use, interestingly, from a traffic perspective, generates the least amount of trips of any of the proposed uses that are other mixed-use or within IWD. This site as itself fits within the scale, the height, the density fits within policy, and it's proximate to four transit stops, which means it's intended to be kind of a hub of activity developed in a denser way.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Council lady? Thanks for coming down.
Thanks for having me. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Chair, commissioners. Sorry, in my notes, of course, went away right when I came up. Planning staff and my constituents, and of course Andrew and the team at Samara Road, who have taken so much time to review and discuss this proposal. Today, I'm really coming to ask for a deferral of the Merritt and Martin specific plan in its current form. I, you know, after listening to all my constituents and then, you know, asking direct questions to the developer and reviewing the staff report in detail, I still have concerns that remain unresolved. And, you know, for me, especially my constituents who have issues that have gone unaddressed, that's very important to me. One, when we talk about the density, I had asked, on behalf of the community, they wanted a reduction of hotel keys and residential units. As Samara Road has shared, they reduced the residential units from two hundred to one fifty. And then when we initially looked at hotel keys, whenever we were first presented the project, it was one hundred and twenty-six. Now, in the SP, we have it at one sixty. The request was for the hotel keys to be at one twenty-five, and that has not moved. Second, when we talk about the hotel, whenever I asked to hear from their partner, Aperium, they let me know that typically, they, you know, it's very difficult for them to justify projects under one fifty, and they typically target even more, one sixty-five to one eighty, and welcoming over two hundred thousand visitors annually. To me, you know, that number raises more red flags than it resolves. And to me, just like my constituent shared about the enormous influx of transient traffic disruption and what, you know, that will do to the neighborhood. And I think that just as important, you know, when we look through policy and when we build- and when we build in our city, it matters who we build with and how they build in our city and what that stands and what that means. And so, whenever they, um, identified their partner, I went to look them up and, um, looked up Aperium and they said, you know, they really bring in high-end brand standards, um, that they've promised to wedge with Houston. And for me, you know, I was really concerned when I did my research and I was looking them up and I had, um, and read a review that said that, um, this person helped open one of their newer hotels and, um, half of the executive-level employees quit within two to three months. They, um, paid meager wages and understaffed, but expected to put on the facade that we have a fully-staffed luxury hotel. Um, and, you know, that's for me a concern because if we are saying these promises that we are going to provide, um, this level and this, um, quality to our constituents, um, but that's not the reality, I think that is something to, um, take into consideration. Um, another one is also, I had constituents who were disappointed, uh, with the changes where it removed, um, the public, the large public space that I know many people in the neighborhood, um, were looking forward to. And for me, I'd really like to, um, you know, discuss that, have meaningful reconfiguration on what is possible, um, to make that usable and an asset, you know, for the community that they were looking towards. Um, and of course, fifth, what was troubling, um, for me was just, um, hearing from my constituents and the troubles that they're having now today, um, on, um, the parcels that are active. And I have a constituent, he could not be here today, but, um, he's had to call the police seven times in the past month and a half, uh, because of damage on, um, his property. Uh, and then they would park, um, on the property and when he'd ask them to leave, they would not leave. Um, this is a constituent that saves children's lives, that must leave his home, you know, uh, when the call is necessary. And other constituents who live on the alley, um, are concerned. So, you know, with that, I think it just needs a little more time. I want my constituents to be clear. I know some people thought they were going to do a hundred and ninety-five keys. I want to correct that because that's not true. Um, and so, I think it's really important that the constituents have the latest updated information that we can come together, talk through that, um, so that we can all come, um, fully confident, uh, for, you know, the planning commission. So, I am asking for a deferral. Thank you.
Thank you, Council lady. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And, um, Commissioners, generally, you know, we always work with the council, um, but we also like to have the discussion to see if we air anything else out as, as Commissioners. So, Commissioner Marshall, you want to go first? And then we'll get to a motion.
All right, thank you. I don't have any real concern, especially now hearing from the Council lady, um, and her taking in consideration the, uh, community's views on some of the issues that she felt that need to be still worked out. Um, and so, I would lean more toward, um, respecting the fact that she's asking for that deferral. Uh, I would lean toward that deferral, but I would love to hear the rest of, um, the Commissioners' point of view.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Dundon and then Commissioner Clifton.
Um, so, it looks like this has been deferred eight times already, and I guess I have concerns about, and maybe those were at the applicant's request, but all, all eight were at the applicant's request? Oh, okay.
That's correct. It has not, this is, I think, the first time it's actually been on the agenda. So, it's not unusual, as we're working through large S.P.s, for them to be deferred. And sometimes you don't see that, but once a notice is sent, then we always are, it's always going to be on the agenda, and so that's why it's reflected that way.
Okay, that's, that, that is very helpful. Um, and I guess the other, I guess from a land use and zoning perspective, I have a little bit of concern about making decisions based on tenants' behavior. Um, you know, I, I, I certainly am, you know, glad to hear from, and, and have a lot of, you know, give a lot of weight to the Council lady's opinion because she knows her constituency in this area. Um, but I guess I, I have a little concern about putting weight on the tenant's behavior, um, in terms of a decision about zoning. And then, um, and then for traffic, I guess since traffic comes up in almost every one of our meetings, I was wondering if you could just maybe illuminate for me a little bit. We always get, you know, the, the, the opinion of metro traffic, um, the traffic study. And if you could just maybe give us a, or give me a little context of, are they, do they do a traffic analysis? And, and they presumably have studied the impact on traffic? And if they're approving this, they're making a decision that it's not going to impact the community? I mean, I guess maybe as, if you could just fill me in a little bit on what their study does. What, what do they look at when they write this analysis?
Sure, so, uh, uh, MMTA, multimodal transportation analysis, is what they are referred to as now. So, it is a broader look at mobility, not just vehicular traffic, but also pedestrians and bicycles for a holistic view. Um, uh, will it generate more cars? Yes. Uh, it will also generate more pedestrians and more bikes. The analysis is meant to identify where there are weak points or where there are capacity issues so that those can be corrected. Um, when, when, uh, NDOT is reviewing, um, an analysis of something like this, they're going to have recommendations that will, um, limit negative impacts, but, uh, and, and address any capacity issues. So, by their recommending approval, they are essentially saying, with these improvements, the infrastructure can, um, handle the impact. Does that make sense?
Yes.
It's not a zero-sum game. It's sort of an analysis of what improvements can be made to offset negatives, um, so that, but recognizing that the capacity exists.
Okay, that, no, that, that is helpful. Um, I guess I, I would like to hear also from others before making my own decision.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Clifton and then Vice Chair, did you want to speak too? I thought I saw you. What, okay, and then Vice Chair. Commissioner Clifton, you recognize, and then Commissioner Leslie.
Did I do that? Well, I just, um, this is a very complex issue and has been worked on a long time. And it's to be expected that, uh, um, there'd be lots of concerns with the scale of an issue. I, um, we've had a recent example of why, um, why it's probably best to, to take our time at, at the level of this Commission's decision-making than to go forward to the council without having some of that done here. Uh, we've been criticized for that, but not overruled, um, recently. And I think it's to everyone's best interest to get some of these matters further discussed here at this level. Gives plenty of room later for the council to debate and see if we got it right. Um, and if, but I just think it's logical for us to keep it at this level, um, uh, to understand what's being said and in sort of a, um, non-controversial way, non-incendiary way, just see what the options are, having heard what we've heard today. So, I think for that reason, I would be certainly for, uh, a deferral to, to keep this with the Commission at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, uh, so, yes, Director, would you like to make a comment? And then we'll get into it.
Just if that's the will of the Commission and where you're leaning, it would be helpful, uh, to Commissioner Dundon's comments to get some feedback on the policy as you're deliberating so we can make sure that we're being as productive and thoughtful as possible. The staff have done an analysis that we believe it meets the policy. I think to your point, we did, we would not use tenant behavior as, as a measure. We would look at the context and, um, sort of the environment that is established in the zoning as well as, um, the general plan. But as you're thinking about it, if there are issues or questions you have, let's elevate those so we can make sure that we're on a really good footing to continue to work with the applicant. So, I would just ask that as your, as your thinking about it.
Thank you, Director. It's a very good reminder. And so, we, we have Vice Chair and then Commissioner Leslie. Commissioner Leslie after Vice Chair. I'm sorry, I, I'd recognize her first. I apologize for that. No, you're the best for last. Never, always last. Oh, gosh. Okay, Vice Chair.
Well, I was, I was going in the opposite direction of the direction that the Director just gave us. I, I guess I just had a question, which is that, you know, as we look at projects like this that are really getting slotted in to tight neighborhoods, are there steps that council can take to try to limit the impact that things like this have on, on the neighborhood? Like, you know, I know we have the standard signage that we see that restricts construction hours and things like that, but are there other steps that can be taken?
I mean, this Commission's role is really to evaluate the plan against, against the general plan. And so, there are absolutely growing pains, and we should acknowledge that, especially in urban neighborhoods as we grow. Um, there are mechanisms outside of the Commission where you can address noise complaints or those kinds of issues. Those, I would say, are different than the land use perspective that this body, um, really ought to be thinking about. And, you know, are the improvements, the infrastructure improvements and the pedestrian environment, are those sufficient? I think that's absolutely reasonable for us to be pushing. Are the building uses and heights absolutely in our purview? Um, so, that's my, that's my response.
No, I, 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 I get that. I just, I guess for the sake of, like, thinking to the next step for the Council lady, like, are there, you know, keeping that in mind, um, as this project does move forward to try to see if there's additional creative steps that can be taken to minimize the impact on existing residents who are very close to this project. Switching to your question about where we really think, um, staff can do more, um, I do think staff has done a very thorough analysis. And I think that, you know, in terms of context, this project does fit in very well. I mean, it's, um, it is a lot. Um, but I do think, you know, the sidewalk improvements are key. Um, the only thing that really kind of came to mind for me was a better understanding around what's happening with the alley. I don't, I didn't fully grasp that. Um, you know, I see in the, one of the conditions is exploring whether that alley needs to be abandoned, but that does seem like that's something that's an issue for some of the neighbors. So, I don't know. That just might be one thing to clarify, at least, um, since that seems to be a big concern for some of the neighbors. I don't know, others may have some other things they'd like to add for staff's review.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And we have Commissioner Leslie and then the Council lady. Okay. Commissioner Leslie, you're not last. Uh, we got several other Commissioners that speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I, I want to start this by saying, I really don't, and I appreciate the councilperson and I appreciate the community coming and I appreciate the developers. Uh, I've listened to all this, but I'm not sure why we would be, we would be deferring. And, um, I listened to the opposition. The opposition was noise, uh, construction, traffic, which we hear all the time, and we don't take that lightly. And then I hear from those that are in support. I hear that it's, uh, it's, uh, creates a great infrastructure, helps with the safer sidewalks, and it goes on and on. I looked at, you know, the staff's recommendation. I know there's some other things that might need to be considered, but I'm not sure, uh, what we would, what would be the purpose of deferring it. Um, it's, I mean, you know, when you have a development of this size, I, I'm sure that there's going to be some for and some against. Uh, but if you look at it, and I looked at the WIGO recommendation and the traffic and things of that nature, it seems to be very intense and very extensive. So, I guess my question is, uh, if we're going to defer it, why are we deferring it? That's my question.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, um, I, I think, uh, you know, we always try to get it right. I'm not saying we, as a Commission, get it right every time. Um, we work very, very closely with the council, and so generally, we, um, try to respect their, um, recommendations because we work with them. And ultimately, it's up to them to, to do rezoning. We give our thoughts, and I think there were some thoughts on alley. There might be more, and that's why we had, that's why we have these fine professionals on this Commission is to, uh, make sure we dot all the i's and cross the t's. And so, I appreciate the Commission for doing that. Um, and so, that's part of what, what we do. And I think that's why the Director is asking for specific zoning issues on why we would defer it. So, sure.
I mean, I understand the, the process of deferral, but if we defer it, what specifically are we asking the staff to do on that deferral?
Director?
Test, and they're on. Test. Shall I try? Do you need to call us back, or do we?
No, we're back. We just had a, a brief pause to, so we're right, we're still in discussion. And, um, here we go. The microphones are working for the public record. So, go ahead, Director.
So, one of the reasons I was asking the Commissioners to give, to see if there was anything substantive was to see sort of if I would give, um, our team any guidance about what to do differently. The answer may be that we don't recommend anything differently and we resubmit the staff report to you as it currently is. If we've given you a recommendation about policy and it's really to you to determine, um, if you want to act on that today, it's ultimately a Commission decision, or if you want to defer, um, to give the council members some more time to work with the community. Um, and that's certainly in your discretion, um, to make that, to make that decision. But you may get the exact same analysis from staff.
Council lady, you recognize.
Thank you, Chair. Um, before I give my opinion on the deferral, I have a question about the parking plan. I didn't see much about the parking plan in the staff report. Wondered if there is a plan. Like, we did hear from, uh, one of the speakers about concerns about parking, which I know that is a concern in that area. So, if someone could speak to, is, is there a parking plan and has that been worked out?
Uh, yes, there is in the plan. There is a, a parking plan, including-
There is a parking plan, including below-grade parking. They also have a plan regarding access for hotel valet, that the valet would be in that parking garage and not on the street. They're also providing on-street parking spaces along Martin Street, Hamilton, and Merritt.
And the underground parking, would that be for the multifamily as well?
The parking, yes, is indicated as being for both uses.
Do we know the number of parking spaces?
While Matt looks that up, I do want to note that while they are providing parking, they are within the UZO, and they are actually not required to provide any parking. So anything that they are providing is sort of above what they are required to provide. I think they're looking at the number of, of what is being proposed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that would be helpful for the community to know that as well. And while you're looking that up, oh, go ahead. Were you ready?
So the parking that they're providing is, they're providing one space per every residential unit and one and a half spaces for units that have two bedrooms or more. They're providing half a space for each hotel key. And then they're providing one space per 150 square feet of restaurant use with the first 1,000 feet exempt from that requirement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. That's good information. As far as the deferral, I am inclined to lean towards supporting the deferral to allow, as the council member said, opportunity to update the community on some of the changes that have been made in the plan that maybe community members aren't aware of. Also, opportunity to work with the developer to make sure that they're on the same page. I think it would be in everybody's best interest to, to allow a little bit more time to, for the community, the council member, and developer to work together to make sure everybody has the right understanding on the same page. It looks like this project does meet the policy. Looks like there's been a lot of thought and engagement, public engagement, with this project over the last two years. But I think it would be in everyone's best interest and allow a little more time. I don't know if that, the plan, parking plan that you just explained is something that everybody is aware of, because I didn't see that in the staff report, and I think that's important as well. So maybe that would allow more time to include that information and make sure everybody's aware of that. So for those reasons, I am leaning toward supporting the deferral.
Thank you, Council Lady. Any other discussion? Commissioner Smith.
I think I'll second that. Second a lot of what's been said, in that I have very mixed feelings, I think, from a planning standpoint, which is what we do here and what our task is. It makes sense. It meets the policy. And at the same time, we make a recommendation on zoning, and council makes a decision. And I think if council still has questions or things that they'd like to at least discuss, if not change, it's a little bit maybe premature for us to vote on it. I think from my point of view as a planning commissioner, I agree with staff report. I think some of the qualms about it are at a council level. And I, I think we're best when we work with council and make sure that we're frankly discussing the same project. And I know deferrals are also not painless. I know they're not free. And we, hey, we'll see you in two months, no big deal. I know that's not the case in most cases for the owner and developer. So I have mixed feelings, but I think a short referral, I, I, you know, I'd be convinced I'm leaning that way. At the same time, for the planning staff, I think you did a good report. I do not think that the objections are really at a planning level. And I don't have any, except they're hoping that maybe we can, I know we've had a lot of them. Maybe we can have another meeting, neighborhood meeting. I don't have any pointers for staff. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Vice Chair.
No, I wanted to take out my alley comment, because I think it's included. There is, I see as I go through all of the conditions or recommendations that there's stuff in there about the alley. So I support what Commissioner Smith and Gamble have said, and I think that it is a good report. And it seems to me that we might keep the public hearing closed unless there are noticeable changes with the project when we think about the deferral.
Any other, other discussion? So I, I, me hearing all of the comments from the commissioners, which I appreciate very, very much, potentially, I believe, a one-meeting deferral for, and keep the public hearing closed. And as always, if, if they're, if the commissioners want to open the public hearing back up, we can do that. And we've done that. So would somebody like to, would a commissioner like to make a motion?
Can you clarify? I keep forgetting. Do we have two meetings in July or one, just one? So one-meeting deferral does mean till the end of July? No, it's the beginning of?
No, one-meeting, one-meeting deferral is in two weeks. And so we publish those reports a week from tomorrow.
Is that, is that, does that give enough time for the community meetings?
Or two week, two meeting?
My advice, so there wasn't any substantive planning issues put on the table here. So I would be able to tell you how long it would take us to work something. So this is really, I think, a courtesy to give a little more time for engagement. I don't see, based on this discussion, the staff, you know, putting any technical issues on the table. My, I think my advice would be to defer for two meetings because our report is due next week. And to your point, Commissioner Smith, that's a, you know, that is not necessarily a small thing from an applicant perspective. So, but no, at least it might be helpful, just very quickly. What happens when the commission gives a recommendation? It's to the council office to file. So there's no, there's no filed bill here, obviously. And so just can you talk quickly through that process? That may help on the timing.
Sure. So typically, the way that council, that we operate, that the planning department and council intersect is with council bills. So for any projects where you all make a recommendation of approval or approval with conditions on zoning bills, the planning staff then automatically files those bills with the council office. There's sort of a set schedule where we file once per month, but not every month, because there's no public hearing in June, and it gets sort of complex at the council level. For items where you recommended disapproval, we do not automatically file those unless a council member requests that we file them. Once we file the council bill with the council office, it is up to the council member to sign that legislation, which means that it then moves for introduction at council, for introduction and first reading, and starts the council process. And so the action of us as staff filing it with your recommendation doesn't formally start the council process until a council member signs that bill.
So Director, you're recommending a two-meeting, if we defer. And so here's, here's another thing, commissioners, is that if you don't believe that we should defer, and we give great deference generally, historically, to the council members, you vote no, right? You vote no for the deferral, or you can make a motion to approve. It's up to the commission. And so we're up to, you know, that's up to this commission, so.
The reason I recommended a two-meeting is just because if we're giving time for additional community meetings, then they need time to do that. We just simply have too tight of a schedule.
So we're ready for a motion. There's more discussion. Hold on, Vice Chair. We got, we got another commissioner. We're still in discussion, so Commissioner.
I was going to make a motion for a two-meeting deferral.
That's a proper, yeah, with a, with, and the clarification, with closed public hearing. Continue to have the, that's a proper, is that correct, Commissioner?
Clarification on if that's actually possible.
I have been working through some conversations with Metro Legal based on some changed state laws in regards to the public hearing. I think it's okay if you all make the, the motion with the recommendation to close it, but it may be that it has to be reopened at the next, that it's not optional. But I'm just, and I apologize, we just haven't sort of gotten all of that worked out yet.
I would include it in the motion. If we need to update you, we will.
So if you could restate the motion.
I'd like to restate my motion for a two-meeting deferral with the public hearing to remain closed.
And, and if it's against state law, we'll obviously open up the public hearing. Although generally, we always open it up if there's a request to do so. So, I mean, look, we try our hardest. All right, so it's a proper motion, and is there a second? Is a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the two-meeting deferral, say aye. Opposed, no? Ayes have it. Defer two meetings. Which, the date would be, what Lisa, just to remind everybody?
July 24th.
To July 24th.
At the school board.
And we appreciate everybody coming down. And Council Lady, thank you for taking so much time. And I know you've worked on this a long, long time. So thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. All right. Commissioners, we've been here an hour and 49 minutes. I think we should, if, Vice Chair, you know, we always try to discuss this. I think we should at least try to get through one more and then see how we're doing. I always want to make sure we're, okay. We're on item number six. All right, everybody. We're, we're on item number six. Matt, go ahead for the presentation.
I'm Matt Schake, and I'll be presenting item number six on today's agenda. This is a request to rezone a property located at 13905 Old Hickory Boulevard from AR2A to specific plan to permit 237 residential units. On this slide, the western parcel contains a house, and the eastern parcel is vacant. The house is identified as worthy of conservation, and Metro Historical staff have provided a recommendation of approval on this plan. The published staff report mentions historic zoning, but this recommendation was provided by Metro Historic. This clarification will be updated in the report with the meeting minutes. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The site consists of two parcels, zoned AR2A, located on the southern side of Old Hickory Boulevard. The surrounding parcels are zoned AR2A with a specific plan, zoned property to the southwest of the site that permits a mixture of single-family residential, multifamily residential, and commercial uses. Surrounding properties have developed with single-family and vacant uses with multifamily uses in the broader area. The site is located within the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving and conservation policy areas. The T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy intends to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, improved connectivity, and moderate-density development patterns. The conservation policy on the site is for stream buffers, including Indian Creek in the center of the site. The proposed overall site plan is shown on this screen. This view is of the northern portion of the site. The northern portion proposes a maximum of 97 multifamily residential units and 54 single-family lots. The multifamily units are located towards the interior portions of the site with single-family lots surrounding these units along a proposed north-south local street. The single-family lots include both front-loaded and rear-loaded. While all the multifamily units are proposed to be rear-loaded and fronting open space, site access is provided via proposed north-south public street and an alley access connecting to Old Hickory Boulevard. The southern portion of the site proposes a maximum of 86 single-family residential lots, all of which front onto public roads. A proposed collector avenue traverses the site from east to west, consistent with the major and collector street plan, and stubs at the western and northeastern property boundaries to allow for future extensions. The collector street intersects with the proposed local street on the northern portion of the site. Through the center of the site is Indian Creek, of which the proposed residential lots avoid. The plan includes architectural design conditions, including a maximum height of three stories and 35 feet for all unit types, material and glazing requirements. Reviewing the plan against the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy, staff found the plan incorporates several characteristics of the policy by providing a moderate-dense development pattern, including a range of housing types. The plan provides improved connectivity by including a new east-to-west collector roadway through the site, providing for future connectivity to surrounding properties. The plan also includes design characteristics, including height requirements and building orientation, consistent with the policy. Reviewing the plan against the conservation policy, the site is designed around Indian Creek and stream buffers throughout the proposed lots, and units generally avoid the floodway areas around these waterways as well. With that, staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you, sir. And so commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing as the applicant in the room. Welcome. You have 10 minutes, and please state your name, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Mr., my name's Tom White. I'm an attorney with Toon, Nitro, and White, 511th Avenue North. And on behalf of the applicant, Roy Dale and I would do this presentation. I would like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. And I'm sorry that Stuart Clifton has left, because every man's got their limitations. I'm not going to ask him to join the IT firm at our law firm, but I took great delight with his comments. At the front end, I want to comment, this matter was on consent until just a few days ago. I think every department has recommended approval. I do want to comment that there was an issue raised about the status of a structure on the piece of property. So I've asked for a letter to be handed out to everybody on the commission. I think that's been handed out. But I'll read that letter. And the letter is to Ms. Kemp, and it's from Byron Hall, is the Director of Operations at the Codes Department. Ms. Kemp, we inspected the property located at 13905 Old Hickory Boulevard in Antioch this morning and found it to be in bad state of disrepair. It is our opinion that in its current condition, the property is unfit for human habitation. Currently, the property meets the criteria for demolition under the Metro Codes guidelines. It's also our opinion there is no feasible option for salvaging the structure. We would suggest the owner demo the structure to avoid further action by this department. That's the clear language from the Codes Department. I don't think I've ever dealt with a department with Metro that has the authority to demo buildings. Normally, the way it works, they make the recommendation. If the owner doesn't do it, the Codes Department comes in. That's the way it happens. Now, with respect to this specific matter, I want to comment about the references to the council person here. The council person has indicated his support, but it's particularly strong. He makes the comment, there has been significant community engagement, including meeting with the Kane Ridge Community Club membership and direct one-on-one engagement with nearby neighbors. This property is commonly referred to as the Sheriff Bryley property. Judge David Bryley pulled me aside at the courthouse to remind me he attended a meeting regarding the property of the Kane Ridge Community Club due to its history and his family. He expressed support of the plan. Apparently, Sheriff Bryley was a longtime distant cousin. Now, I mention that because I think it's so important with respect to the name. I contacted Judge Bryley, formerly the mayor. And I spoke to him about this, and wanted to be very clear that I would have his acknowledgement and approval to make his comments. He was very clear that he gave me the authority to say he did attend the meeting. He clearly supports the request. The request would be to basically demo this house, among other things. I sent him a copy of this letter from the Codes Department today. He maintains very strongly. today. Uh, he maintains very strongly his support of the request, uh, as it is, which requires the demolition of the structure. Now, I'll comment further, uh, with respect to the, uh, neighborhood activity. The councilman's correct, there were a number of neighborhood meetings. The client was very hands-on, there were approximately ten kitchen-to-kitchen, uh, meetings that he had with neighbors most directly affected, all of whom have been supportive. With respect to activities on the site, the client went above and beyond. They engaged a noted archaeologist, Dr. Jones, who's here today. Uh, Dr. Jones's comments are very clear, they've been submitted to the staff, uh, and I'll just summarize some of those for the commission today. He met Metro Historic at the site. Uh, his investigation was performed, it showed two hundred shovel tests, no significant artifacts, no old cemetery sites found, house not architecturally significant, lack of original components, extensive modifications, house remodeled without consideration of preservation, house in poor condition, materials and construction were of poor quality. Now, this was a meeting at the site that my client set up with Dr. Jones and a representative of Metro Historic. The representative from Metro Historic agreed with that. In addition, Metro Historic has signed their vote for approval, which is on your agenda. They've clearly come out with the approval. Uh, I've asked, with respect to further activities on the site, um, I would state that, uh, the proposal by my client is consistent with policy, uh, it's consistent with mixed uses, and in fact, the staff comments are particularly clear that it gives a range of housing types. Fifty-one percent of the property is open space. Uh, I think it's an ideal proposal. Uh, I'd urge approval today. We'll answer any questions. I specifically wanna thank the staff for the tremendous time they've spent on this. My client's been very sensitive to that and appreciative. Appreciate also the time of the planning commission members. You serve on a, basically, a pro bono basis, so the chairman said, we're not unaware of that, we appreciate your time. We'd urge your approval today. Thank you very much. As opposed to the last matter, the councilman's strongly, adamantly in support. Councilman Rutherford's a good council member. Thank you.
I'm Roy Dale of Galloway Associates. I'll see if I can do this quickly and save two minutes. It's, it's sort of a shame that the focus on this is, has become maybe this questionable building, which I've seen, and it's in bad shape. This is a really good plan. This is a collaboration of a lot of work between the, uh, council staff, I mean, count, the planning commission staff, the property owner, and, um, Michael Garrigan, actually, he's not here tonight. So this plan is actually almost a rural maintenance-type plan. It's got three units per acre. It preserves so much open space, so much conservation area. I think this plan started off like three hundred and sixty units, and you know, it's down to like, a little over two hundred now. So it's, it's a really great, great plan, a lot of thought went into that plan. Uh, it was deferred multiple times, a lot of this because there's, need to be a lot of coordination between departments. NDOT specifically looked at site distance, and the high point of the site is exactly where this building is, and that's where this access would have to be. It could not really be anywhere else. So, um, the building's in bad shape, I've looked at it personally, uh, but what they are gonna do is they're gonna save elements around the building. There's an old wall out in front of the site, which will be preserved, it'll be at the entrance. There's a lot of large trees, that'll be preserved as well, so there'll be an area in the front of the site that'll be very park-like, which will reflect, you know, what was actually there in this rural setting, and this, this development, although it's neighborhood-evolving, which could allow a lot more density than that, it's much less than that. Many times, we come to the commission when we're next to rural maintenance, and we're trying to say, well, we're transitioning, you know, we wanna transition up. In this case, it's unique, you have neighborhood-evolving, we're transitioning down. So, it's, it's a great plan, I'm proud of the plan. I think the staff should be proud of the plan, because they all had a part in putting this together. There has been a lot of engagement on this. The council members are solidly in support of it, and I would encourage you to follow the staff's recommendation and recommend it, and so we'll hold two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support, come on up, welcome. And if everybody line up behind the podium, if, in support. Thank you.
Well, thank you. They, uh, Wes Patterson with Patterson Company, sixteen forty-five West Gate Circle. Um, I look over to my left, and I know Matt and Andrea have worked very hard on this, we've had a lot of meetings on it. Um, the neighborhood, as Roy said, did start off, we start off, as you start talking about the land use, and it was the T three neighborhood-evolving, and, and he said three sixty-some-odd, but it was around, it actually was three eighty-one. So, we started there, started trying to take and have a diversity of product, and went through that. The, Matt and Andrea were fantastic working with us, and then also you start to take in direct feedback from neighbors next door, which, as Tom alluded to, we had over ten meetings, which we call kitchen-to-kitchen, because it's one-on-one, you get really good feedback, and those were adjacent neighbors. And there were two neighborhood meetings as well. So, I say that all to the fact of, um, everybody put a lot of work in that, and as Matt was going through it, I could see all the renditions in my head of how the collector road has changed, how floodway, product, preserving slopes, y- you name it, there's so much work that went into it, and we are proud of it, and we're proud of the neighborhoods. And when I say proud of the neighborhoods as well, we've done neighborhoods in Davidson County before, and we love it, and at the end of the day, there's one right across the street where we've built a hundred and seven homes in there, and I have seven, six letters with me, I think they've been uploaded, but I did wanna read one. Um, got thirty seconds, but it's from the HOA president, and it says, uh, "Dear Madam, writing in support of Metro Case," and it goes on with a number, "My wife and I purchased our home at Old Hickory Crossing in two thousand twenty-one. I'm currently served as the Homeowner Association President for the neighborhood. Through this role, I've worked directly with Patterson Companies, they complete our community and transition responsibility to the homeowners. Throughout that process, Patterson Company demonstrated professionalism, responsiveness, genuine commitment to doing the right things the right way. I have full confidence that their proposed new development will reflect those same values." Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Scott Jones, and I am a, uh, professional archaeologist. I own and operate a archaeological and historical consult, consulting firm out of Murfreesboro, and I was hired by the client to do an evaluation of this property. First, I would like to say that the developer should be commended for the amount of time, energy, and money that they have invested in this, uh, property to deal with the historic preservation issues. It's unusual to have a private developer, uh, address these concerns to the extent they have. Like, uh, Mr. White previously said, we did an archaeological survey. We did not find anything of significance on the property. We also did an evaluation of the house, the Bryley house, that is on the property. Uh, I did that in conjunction with a architectural historian that I work with, and when we evaluate properties for their, uh, historic significance, there are a number of criteria that we have to consider. Uh, when we evaluate significance, we have to do this in regard to, uh, generally, the National Register of Historic Places, and do these properties, um, do they have, meet these criteria for significance. And one of the, uh, criteria is, uh, historical integrity. Does the structure retain the historical integrity necessary to be listed? And in this instance, uh, I can say that with a resounding no, it does not. There is, except for possibly the foundation, there is nothing, uh, original or retaining any original integrity, uh, to this structure, and compounded with, uh, Metro Codes, that the, um, the house is in very poor shape, I think it should be, uh, demolished.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I am Sarah Grace-Hare. I live at seven five five six Maggie Drive. So, as the bird flies just across the street from the proposed plan, um, I wanted to come in to show my support for the development, especially on behalf of a local builder. I know myself, as a homeowner and resident in the area, and a lot of my neighbors surrounding me, we are excited about the growth in the area and excited about the plan. As far as all the comments about, um, the historical home and it being uninhabitable, I think a lot of the residents in the area know that's the case, just from passing by, as well as the evidence that's been presented. Um, so again, we're excited about the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Make sure we get, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. You, uh, you know, there's an issue when you have, um, Mr. Roy Dale and Mr. Tom White and Mr. Wes Patterson and others, uh, coming up to speak. So, um, Twanachik, Kane Ridge Community, this is in Councilman Rutherford's district. Just across the street, there's a large development in progress, and it's five, please, instead of two. Um, and it is, we've had four, uh, council member-led meetings with that one. We also had four council member-led meetings with the one on Kane Ridge Road, uh, as well as numerous, uh, other smaller meetings in between. The difference on this one is that we haven't had any council member-led meetings, and, uh, residents in District Thirty-One have asked for that. So, we're here to ask for a three-meeting deferral. Um, and in part, the things we're asking for is so that the complete reports can be shared. It sounds like some of them may have happened since the last time, but on May seventh, uh, Metro Historical said, uh, "The proposed SP will result in demolition of the historic residence, recommend retaining the historic house on a large lot as part of the development, including designation as a historic landmark. Consult with historical commission staff." And then skipping down into the later report, they said, "The archaeological report's missing any site history or documentation of the home. Also, did not test near the north section of the property or include details of the shovel test pits. We request additional documentation, as well as archaeological testing, et cetera." Um, so, we're requesting that to still happen, and to have some communication between Metro Historic, Metro Historic, uh, zoning, State Historical, and Metro Planning Department's staff. We're also requesting at that, uh, four-way intersection that it's showing there, uh, we ask them to create a larger easement, so that when that becomes a collector road, it can be turned into a traffic circle to facilitate the movement of traffic. Um, and they have said, no, they won't do that, but what we know is, you look at Nolan'sville Pike, and if you wait and have to get those easements later, it costs us all, as taxpayers, more to do that, so we're asking for that to be set aside. We also asked, like we did for the property across the street, who was willing to do it, that the townhomes be moved into the back of the property. The community has requested that it not look like an apartment complex from Old Hickory Boulevard, and they've asked to modify the garage sizes. One of our most prevalent crimes in the area is theft from motor vehicle, which means you then end up with guns being stolen, uh, and it means that you need more police, and so we keep asking for garages that will accommodate vehicles and have some storage for people. So, we're asking for that. Um, and we also are asking, again, for a third-party review of the developer's choosing, uh, to document the house before anything else can happen to it. Um, I hear the comments about what Metro Codes has said, but as late as yesterday evening, people are still living in the house, so it's interesting that it's declared uninhabitable, uh, and they've been saying this for months, and yet people are living in it until now. Um, and we also would like them to, uh, be willing to buy into the invasives, uh, removal and, uh, management plan that we're trying to do for all of Kane Ridge. We are overrun with that, and it really deteriorates the whole community. So, we're asking for deferral in order to accomplish these other things, and look at the, the collector road and easements. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Come on up.
Thank you. Good e- good afternoon, evening. My name is Dr. Corey Floyd, and I am a resident of one three nine one four Old Hickory Boulevard, and so we are right across the street from the property. Our property line is basically from where I am to where you are, right across the street. Um, a couple of things. Number one, um, I'm a bit disappointed because, uh, Councilman Rutherford, uh, refuses to meet with us. Um, we've asked him on several occasions to meet with us, and he basically said, oh, well, we'll send the developer out, and you can talk to him. He's the representative for the area, and in full transparency, it is his responsibility as the representative to represent his constituents. That's the first thing. Second thing, there's a family that lives in the home. There's a Hispanic family that lives in the home, so if the house, and I live right across the street, so I don't drive by, I know, 'cause I see it. So, my thing with that is, okay, if the house is uninhabitable, then, and there's a codes issue, then maybe the lawyer may have some other issues as far as representing the client, unless the people are squatters, okay? Um, the house, we believe, has historical, uh, significance to the area, and we don't have a problem with, um, we don't have a problem with people coming and development, because it's progress, but at the same time, we have the right to be concerned about maintaining the historical significance and the integrity of our neighborhood, okay? And so, with that being said, um, I echo everything that machine, uh, has asked for, and furthermore, um, I think that Councilman Rutherford, uh, needs to do what he's supposed to do and be involved with his constituents as the elected official. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Thomas Floyd, and I live at thirteen nine twenty Old Hickory Boulevard, which is right across the street from the development, which is within a thousand feet of the development. Uh, my main concern also is with our councilperson. We have not had a meeting, he will not have a meeting. I can send, show you emails and letters concerning this account, uh, this project, and he will not meet. But we have, there's a project that's off of Blue Hole Road with less property, and he has two council meetings already, or meetings on that property. I don't understand the issue. Uh, my main concern is possibly with traffic, and then also because where we live at, from twenty-four to get to sixty-five, we're right away from Concord Road, traffic's gonna be bad. And with another subdivision, and then, 'cause we already have one that's started, and then the tunnel put another one at the corner where church is, right by Pettis, with infrastructure, we need to have something set before we start developing, because right now, we already have, we've already have accidents with that. Barely can get out of driveway in the mornings or in afternoons. So, before we even try to expand a development on either side, we need to work on some infrastructure in that aspect, because all you're asking for is a big mistake. If that happens, someone's gonna get hurt. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal.
Chairman, uh, my first comment is, I think a number of people on this, uh, committee, uh, and planning commission have dealt with Councilman Rutherford for a long time. He's an incredibly capable, committed councilman, and I read his comments earlier, where he said there had been, quote, "Significant involvement." My client talked about that, including the letter from the president, the HOA, for the hundred-plus homes right across the street. Uh, they've talked about ten meetings, the kitchen-to-kitchen type meetings that they've had. So, this is a case unlike the last one, where the councilman is not just supportive, he's urging approval at this level and not to be deferred. Uh, and with respect to some of the other comments, I, I would like to say, with respect to the house itself, there can be no Metro Agency more conversant with the conditions of this house than the Codes Department. They went out there. We, my client has an option on the property, we do not own it. We have offered to move the families in there out of the place, because if you've looked at the pictures that are available, it's clearly not a place that should be inhabited, period, end of story. Uh, that needs to change. We cannot tem- demo the house ourselves until we close on it, we're made that commitment. We've also spoken to the current owner about the property, about the condition, and there's been a commitment to the family there that we would move them and help them find a new place. It's deplorable, they shouldn't be living there, nobody should be. So, I respectfully ask that, with respect to the condition of the house, nobody has a better feeling for that than the Codes Department. You read their report, I've read it, it can't be any clearer. We respectfully ask it to be approved. Again, the councilman has indicated significant community involvement. We take that, we've relied on it, he's done a number of zonings down here, I think the members of this commission realize, how committed John Rutherford is to handling matters in this district. So, we respectfully ask it be approved today, not deferred. Thank you for your courtesies.
Thank you, and si- not seeing the council member here, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Leslie, you wanna go first? Commissioner Leslie, you want to go first? Oh, we do need to, before we do that, Commissioner Leslie, you're still going to be first, but we have a comment from the staff to update us on the house.
Sure. So, there are a couple of different places where planning staff finds designations of properties, so that you're sort of aware of the environment that we work within. There are formal designations, formal local designations, like historic landmark, neighborhood conservation overlay, neighborhood preservation overlay. Those are sort of regulatory animals. There are also designations that we think about that are also still important, which are national register, which means something that is listed on the national register, national register eligible, and then worthy of conservation. And worthy of conservation is often sort of a flag to say, hey, you should look at something maybe a little bit closer. And this property was flagged as worthy of conservation. The Metro Historical Commission staff has gone to the site on a site visit. They were not able to do an interior inspection, which they would like to do, but based on an exterior inspection, they have determined that the house is national register eligible. And so, I did want to make sure that I got that into the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Leslie. And then Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Smith first.
Absolutely. Commissioner, you know, I don't want you to be last. That's, I was just trying to make a point. So, Commissioner Smith.
I just had a question. Why were they not able to do the interior inspection?
My understanding is that they were not permitted inside. I believe it was occupied, but they were onsite with the potential developer, I believe, the applicant, and were not allowed to enter the building to do an interior inspection.
Thank you.
This planning was not there, and so, we're trying to piece together information from the historic team. The information about the national register eligible eligibility came at the start of our meeting, so it was actually updated from what even the applicant had available, you know, two hours ago.
Well, I'll start us off. It was a very prepared, thorough presentation. Thank you. I think it's a good plan, so I want to get that out of the way. I am, had the privilege of serving on the Metro Historic zoning commission as well as a representative of this body. And so, I saw that note on there in the report, kind of wanted to dig in, and had not seen this from Mr. Hall yet, but, and don't want to squabble over with an archaeologist, which I am not. It seems Metro Historic views this as national historic, national register eligible and worthy of preservation. I know that's not your opinion in writing, and I got it. And I'm not looking to stop you or slow you down too much. This is really a question. Would a condition by this body for further evaluation on the home by Metro Historic and a further evaluation of the site with credit, with preservation credit given for maybe preserving that in some way more than we're thinking now, for more density or less preservation space? Does that have any interest to you? Is that a, I don't want to be arbitrary.
Mr. White, you were asked a question by Commissioner, so please.
We would not be amenable to that for the following reason. Understanding the difference between an historic interest in it with respect to this structure and how it can be done, nobody can refute what the Codes Department has said. And there is an interest, I understand that, that someone would like to say, let's look at this further. And I've made the commitment, you know, where the house is located is particularly key because of, as Roydale said, where the road comes up. It's not like we can go in another way or something like that, so we're not trying to be difficult. But I would say this, if the approval were here, conditioned upon my client continuing to work in good faith with the Codes Department or another Metro Agency, we would do that. But again, at the end of the day, if you read that staff report, how can anybody reasonably say that the house is able to be salvaged? And that's, they don't work for us, it was Metro, but my question to you is, if we could put the driveway and other things somewhere else, I think what you're saying would have some merit. We try to get further density somewhere else on the property. Fully understand that. But I want to be as responsive as I can in saying that, in light of the Codes report, as opposed to, I mean, let's face it, the historic committee recommended approval. And now, I've heard what's been said today, but something being eligible and being viable, I respectfully think are two different things. But I appreciate you, if there was a way to do it, we would do it. That's all I can say. But if there's, if there's an approval conditioned upon us working in good faith with a Metro Agency that you name, we would do that. We would do that.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to listen for a little bit.
Counsel lady, you had your hand up next to, and then...
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about the building codes or Metro Codes comment about the building being uninhabitable and people living there. And I don't know if planning could answer this question or not, but is there a, an order or something that this building should be evacuated or condemned since it's uninhabitable?
I don't believe that there is any official order, and typically with Metro Codes, for any sort, there is always a court action, and there are time for remediation before there's an order for demolition.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. This is a difficult one because the, from the speakers that we heard in opposition and from the letters, it seems like the opposition revolves around the demolition of this possibly historic home that could be possibly on the historical register, and also the lack of communication directly with some of the residents. We did get a letter from the councilmember expressing his support and stating that the developer did one-on-one communication, I guess, or engagement with nearby neighbors. And so, I guess, and I know under our purview as commissioners and the planning, for the planning commission, we are looking at this as to if it meets policy, if it provides a good service, meet the needs of the community. And it looks like, from the staff report and the recommendation, that those two, those things are apparent in this, in this project. I'm not sure what a deferral would do if we were to go towards a deferral. I guess that would be my next question. What, and I think Commissioner Leslie asked that on the last project. I saw the need for one there, but I'm not sure what, other than maybe what commissioners said about the, getting more information from the Historical Commission and seeing, you know, really if this house is something that we should not be looking to demolish, and then if that is the case, how could the plan be changed so that there's another ingress and egress if this house is instrumental to that? So, I guess there are a lot of questions that maybe still need to be explored, so that could be a reason for a deferral. I think I just answered my own question. So, I'll just keep listening, and, but those are questions.
Director, any thoughts on the question?
Well, I think historic preservation is incredibly important to a growth management plan. And downtown, we've preserved about 16 buildings as part of an upzoning, period. So, we, when we look at SPs or other changes to zoning, we ought to evaluate fully housing need, appropriate density, but also protection and preservation of open spaces, natural features, and historic structures. I think this plan does a lot of really great things. 50% or something of it is in open space. That's a great form of preservation. It's really important. I think the structure, I have not visited the site, that's also another important form of preservation. I'm a little bit candidly concerned about the nature of the dialogue that we had with the Historical Commission staff. Clearly, there was some confusion about their position. And I am committed, through a programmatic review as part of the conversation we had with council, to make sure that we are doing everything we can as a planning commission to incorporate preservation as part of our work, but clearly, there was a disconnect here. We got clarification from Director Walker by email as we started this meeting, and they're important decisions that I would like to not happen that way. And so, to, I thought that, Commissioner, you asked a really good question. Is there a way to holistically evaluate our goals for the site, looking at the density? They gave up a lot of density on the site as a result of planning staff's comments, so they've already made a lot of significant changes. We did not ask that the structure be preserved in part, unrelying on what we thought we understood from the Historical Commission. We now have updated information. So, I think that the project has a lot of great things about it. It has been deferred a few times. To me, if you wanted to probe this issue about preserving the structure, we have precedent for doing that as part of an upzoning. We also have let structures go that were not protected because we were valuing other things like, you know, density or open space and the like. So, it's for this commission to balance, but I think it's a reasonable question to ask, and you've got conflicting information on the table.
Thank you, Counsel lady. Commissioner Leslie.
So, as I understand it, is that, if I understand this correctly, is that the staff recommends that it be approved with conditions and disapproved without all conditions, but there is, the Historical Commission says it's worthy of conservation?
My understanding is initially, there was a note that it was worthy of conservation. I received written correspondence from the director of Historic walking into this meeting that it, in their view, is national register eligible, which is a more important category. However, that said, they did not enter the building. They did not enter the structure. And so, they did an exterior view of it and reached a determination. The Codes Department did do an evaluation of the structure this morning and raised the issues that you have in front of you. And so, if you were to recommend protecting the building, which you have previously, we would be creating an expectation that it be renovated, stabilized, renovated, and probably sold as part of a residential development. So, it's just a, it's a different, it's a, it's a different thing.
Excuse me. Do you know Codes went on the inside and inspected?
Yes, they did go on the inside. Historic Commission did not, staff did not, is my understanding. And all of this is being pieced together by some correspondence that is not as linear as probably we need for a decision like this.
And but there's no order by Codes saying that it needed to be demolished?
Correct. My understanding is Codes has not taken that step. They simply provided a report of the current condition of the house. They have other authorities that they can rely on, and is my understanding that they have not, you know, initiated those processes to take the structure down. Correct.
We're still on discussion. Commissioner Dutton.
So, I guess, to the points that have been raised, you know, the applicant has an option on the property. My guess is if we say, you're going to have to restore this property, that they may not exercise that option. And we're putting the expense of having to repair a house on someone that doesn't exist potentially. And according to this Codes report, it sounds like it's going to be extremely expensive to do that, if it can even be done. They're saying that there's no feasible option for salvaging the structure. So, I feel like we're weighing that against a very good plan that meets policy, that creates housing, that saves 51% of open space, which is a number I have not seen usually in these type of plans. So, I feel like there's, those are all things we're trying to actively encourage. And, you know, obviously, we need to do preservation as well. As you said, that's a laudable goal, too. But in, I guess, in my view, this, the two goals are, potentially cannot both be realized on this one site, and we have something really good in front of us that meets a lot of goals, and I would be in favor of going with staff's recommendation for this. So, that, I guess that's my thought.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Vice Chair.
So, I think that's a really good point that Commissioner Dutton just made, but I don't know that we have to make that decision tonight. I feel like we could make that decision with a little bit more information in two weeks, maybe, something like that, once the staff has had a little bit of time to look into this. I really don't like making a decision when we have new information introduced both by the applicant and by staff in, like, the minutes before we hear the case. I think that, you know, both of these pieces should be looked into a little bit. And I also think, you know, the one person, or one of the people who spoke out against this had some fair questions. I mean, I thought the idea of a traffic circle, you know, as we're starting to think about what, how this, we have connectivity to the surrounding parcels, which theoretically will come over time, you know, what are the things that can be done to make traffic flow? So, I think that might be something else to explore as, you know, because I do want to recognize that there were some valid concerns raised. So, and I will say, just process-wise, I know there's another phase of this going to council, and I hope that the councilmember will consider doing outreach with his constituents directly, but it does bother me to hear that people have asked for meetings with him, and he's referred them to the applicant. I think this should be, he, as was said, he represents his constituents, and he should be meeting with them directly if they ask for it. So, I think I would be in favor of a deferral for those reasons.
And Vice Chair, I know we had the discussion for deferral for procedural reasons last time because of reporting. Is it, so, could we do it in one meeting, or could we, could you, could you all clarify if one meeting is enough time for us to deferral?
I think if it's a question of sending Historic out to look at the site with Codes, Codes has already seen it. I mean, that's something that can happen in a matter of a couple of days and get a determination. I think if Commissioner Smith's request that the applicant let us know if there's anything that holistically could be done that might include some form of preservation of the structure with perhaps additional density, for example, or sort of, you know, placement conversation about the access point, that's a harder thing that, that needs, that would, I would want to hear from the applicant about their views on what's possible there and work with the staff. So, I think if there's a sense of the commission that that's the direction we want to go, I would say a little more time. If it's just about getting information from Historic, I think that can be done pretty quickly.
Thank you. More discussion. We're still in discussion. We'll need a motion if, or more discussion. Commissioner Henley?
I'll share my opinion, and it's mostly echoing what Lucy said. I mean, we're, it sounds like we're being asked to have dialogue about information. It happened this morning and a couple hours ago. It just feels inappropriate. I obviously understand that there's been a lot of work done, and I will echo what Commissioner Smith said. I don't, I don't think the plan is a bad plan. I actually like what they've done and how they've addressed a lot of concerns, and appears though they've done great work with staff. I just feel like if there's material conversation we're having here, it makes me a little uncomfortable because I'm hearing our staff tell us it's information they found out less than 24 hours ago, that, and then asking them to weigh in and support our dialogue. It just seems like it's brushed. Now, the timing piece, I think, is one that I would echo as well, because my question was going to be the same. It appears as though there's guidance that's been given on exactly where the access point is, and from looking at it, the home is quite pronounced and very close to the road, so there's probably, there probably is some limitations to where you can access and to not significantly impact the home, if at all. But I would like to have that information to be able to weigh in from a more knowledgeable standpoint. That's just my, my opinion, is there's just not a lot of information, or what's come in seems to be being pieced together, which is, you know, I don't think that's an appropriate position for our staff to be in.
Mr. White, what...
Chairman, hearing what we're hearing, although we're clearly opposed to the
Chairman, hearing what we're hearing, although we're clearly opposed to the deferral, if it's done, if it could be deferred one meeting, and Historic, contact my client about access to the house. That's all. We'll report back. We're not the least bit concerned about the structural integrity of the house, and if Historic's never been in it, and yet they recommended approval today. If it's deferred, we'd like to ask it be deferred one meeting, specifically on a basis that a representative from Historic, contact my client and go visit the house. We'll have Dr. Jones meet them out there. If that would be something acceptable to the commission, we'd like to respectfully ask that.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. We're still on discussion. And so, the applicant is asking for one meeting deferral. Just, that's for our information, it's up to the commissioner. So, Vice Chair?
I mean, I guess we could say a one-meeting deferral for this reason, but I assume based on the information that comes back from Historic, staff could say, "We think additional research is needed, and we need an additional, we need to defer it again."
Yeah, we relied on the initial determination from Historic. I will say, preservation is an important goal for this department as well, and we have work to do as Metro to make sure that we're all rowing in the same direction. We, we don't have to have Historic tell us what's important. We, we know. And so, I think we also, what, what we will do with that recommendation, we'll take that seriously, and, and then potentially, it would alter our recommendation. But we will work very closely with the applicant, because as I said, I think there are a lot of great attributes to this plan, and we want to make sure we're respectful of the work that's happened to date and all the great progress. And so, we'll work with them if, if we view it a little bit differently based on that analysis.
And, and...
Let's start with one meeting, yes.
Yeah, one meeting, and then, like, under item E, you know, we have over 15 deferrals. So, we, it's normal for us to defer through the staff recommendation if there's more information. All right. Is there, I feel like maybe a motion. We're ready for a motion, maybe. Vice Chair?
I will make a motion that we defer this item for one meeting, so that Metro Historic can visit the interior of the property and report back.
Make a clear determination.
Make a clear determination.
Of its historical value.
Yeah, of its historical value.
All right. That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Aye's have it, it's deferred one meeting. So, we've been here, two hours and 40 minutes, almost three hours. And so, the commissioners need a restroom break, and we will be, we're going to take a brief break, and we appreciate everybody's patience.
Take a break. We've been here about three hours, so four hours to go. But commissioners, I've got good news. I do have good news. And item number 31 that was objected to, the applicant has asked that it be deferred one meeting, and so we can get this off the table. Is there a motion to defer one meeting? Motion to defer one meeting? Is there a second? On item 31, and that's a proper motion, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of deferring item 31 one meeting, say aye. Posed no, ayes have it, and item 31 is deferred one meeting. All right, so we have concluded three, four items. We have five more left. Item number nine. Item number nine. We're getting through it, all right. Item number nine. Hi, Matty. Matty, go ahead. Well, we'll just, this might take a few minutes. So just give us a second, and we'll, we'll give it a few minutes. We're up and running. Item number nine, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. I am Madeline Welch, and I'll be presenting item number nine on tonight's agenda. This is a request for a preliminary SP to permit 52 single-family lots and 50 multifamily residential units. Staff recommends to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The subject site consists of one parcel totaling 25.44 acres located along the eastern side of Old Hickory Boulevard. The property has been zoned agricultural residential AR-2A since 1974 and is currently vacant and largely wooded. Surrounding properties to the north, east, and west are zoned agricultural residential, and the property to the south is zoned single-family residential RS-10. There is an SP to the east developed with similar density of 3.4 dwelling units per acre as proposed, as well as a property zoned ARM-15, which is developed with multifamily to the north connecting to Bell Road. Other surrounding land uses include single-family residential and vacant land. The site has approximately 1,044 feet of frontage along Old Hickory Boulevard, which is classified as a Collector Street in the major and Collector Street plan. The site is within the T3 suburban neighborhood evolving policy as well as the conservation policy area. The T3 NE policy is intended to create and enhance suburban residential neighborhoods with more housing choices, improved pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity, and moderate density development patterns with moderate setbacks and spacing between buildings. The conservation policy is associated with slopes greater than 20% along the eastern portion of the property as well as the southwestern area. This preliminary SP proposes a local road with a future stub to provide connection to the Collector Street, which is being constructed to the east of the site. The proposed SP would permit residential development with a maximum of 102 units at a density of 4.01 units per acre. Units are provided in the form of single-family lots, detached cottages, and townhomes, providing a mixture of housing types. The site transitions in intensity from the north to the south with the larger single-family lots located at the front nearest Old Hickory Boulevard, and the cottages proposed along the exterior of the townhomes, which are tucked within the center of the development. The single-family lots are all street-facing, and the townhomes and cottages front private drives as well as open space. The maximum building heights for the single-family lots are two stories and 42 feet, and the multifamily are three stories and 48 feet. All units are limited to pitched roofs. Access to the site is taken from Old Hickory Boulevard with sidewalk connection throughout the development, providing pedestrian connectivity from the single-family lots to the multifamily area of the site. The site plan also provides a right-of-way stub to the north and to the east for future connectivity. At the southern boundary within the multifamily portion of the site, the plan provides a private drive, and the private drive forms an open space area between the guest parking spaces. A total of 4.52 acres of preserved open space is proposed at the northeast corner of the site along the southern property line and near the entrance of the site along Old Hickory Boulevard. Additional landscaping buffers have been conditioned along the southern property line to minimize impacts to the adjacent sites, and short-term rental properties owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied are prohibited throughout the entire development. By providing single-family detached cottages and townhome units, the plan meets the goals of the T3 NE policy of adding to the overall diversity of housing choices in the area. The plan meets several of the building form and site design guidelines of the T3 NE policy by providing appropriate orientation and heights as well as vehicular and pedestrian connectivity within the site and to the adjacent developments. The site plan meets the goals of the CO policy by maintaining most of the sloped areas as undisturbed. Single-family lots 19 through 24 are identified as critical lots as they are proposed on the sloped areas of the site. Staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, and so commissioners, we'll open the public hearing on this item. And is the applicant in the room? Welcome, you have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
And I would like to save those two minutes. Members of the commission, Jeff Hines with Catalyst Design Group, 5100 Tennessee Avenue. What I always like to do for you is give you the Cliff Notes version of some of the principles of the plan with my time here. So I will mention that there is a letter of support from Councilman Rutherford on this one as well, and he speaks to the, the public interaction process and that, so I won't delve into that, but there have been community interaction and meetings. Policy compliance, T3 NE, the overall density of this project is right at four units to the acre, which is very much the lower end of the spectrum that T3 NE would, would see. So that's one thing I'll, I'll point out also in working with staff. One thing that was important was that the ratio of single-family lots to multifamily homes be heavier or above 50% on the single-family lots, which is one of the things you'll see. The other kind of hidden detail is the cottage residences that you see in orange on the plan are actually being considered as multifamily even though they are a standalone unit because they are in an HPR format. So out of those 50 residences that are classified as multifamily, over half of those are single-family cottages that resemble single-family homes are just not on a subdivided lot, which is one of the things that allows us to be more compact and avoid slopes. Open space, Matty mentioned that 4.55 acres or 17% were open space. That is the untouched, preserved, natural open space. If you take all of the courtyards, the green space that will be, you know, even some stormwater, just areas outside lots and building footprints, we're over 40% of the site that is in open space. So I think the comment that was offered with the last plan that was at 50%, we're at 40%, which is pretty considerable from, from what I have seen, certainly. Varied housing types, staff mentioned that, that is one of the compliance items within the, the policy, and that was something that was worked on with the community in terms of introducing cottage residences, townhomes, and then single-family lots, so that we do have affordable price range of different opportunities with this plan. So it is not all, you know, just single-family subdivided lots. That is, is one of the strengths and was a concern expressed during the community meeting. The multifamily is situated where it is because of slopes on this site. That is in one of the flatter areas of the site, and then you see steep slopes that roll off each side of that area. So part of the planning for this is being sensitive to what the site is telling us from the beginning in terms of natural conditions. What you will hear from the individual that, that raised their hand was a few concerns that the Cambridge Community Club would like to express, and if I have time now, I still have time. We're going to agree on the record to certain things that I know are concerns to them. We're going to word it a little bit different than, you know, they per se would like to see us say, but we are agreeable to, one of the concerns was the depths of garages, I think you heard that on the last plan, concern with oversized vehicles. And what I will say in response is, one way we addressed this on a different plan was to agree to the depth of a driveway from the public sidewalk to the actual garage door being, I think we said 25 feet on the other one, which if you drive a massive pickup truck with a trailer hitch on the back, you may have to park it outside, but most builders design their garages at 21 or 22 foot in depth. I, I know the concern is they'd love to see 24 or 25 foot in depth, but most builders just aren't going to do that for the individual that drives the, the larger trucks. So we can agree to making sure we set back enough to allow for that exterior space and not impede the public sidewalk if you happen to drive one of those vehicles. Rentals, we're in agreement to limiting the percentage of rentals that can be owned by any one individual. We'll put that in the HOA documents in the future. And the, the concern was to try and limit the number of rentals in total that can be in the development, and that's one thing I think we just have a concern that from, and Tennessee law says this too, if you own a home and you are relocated or something, you know, you have the right to, to lease your residence if you want to decide to keep it. So that's our concern in trying to say you can only have 15% of total community being in rentals. It, it's something the HOA shouldn't be put in, in that position. So we will limit who can own these, that So we will limit who can own these, that you can't own, you know, one group come in and and create a rental housing community. Invasives, we are willing and agreeable to removing invasives on the property in the areas that are adjacent to our development. The four-point-five-five acres we're preserving in untouched area are where some of the steepest slopes are, and getting into those areas with motorized equipment to remove invasives or doing it by hand is just going to tear up some areas that we don't believe need to be touched. So from that standpoint, we'll agree to do it in the areas adjacent to our development. So with those things having been said, I'll I'll keep two minutes for rebuttal, and we appreciate your time. We too think this is a good plan, so we appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone wishing to speak, and we'll reserve two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Jimmy Pierce, twenty-five fifteen, Brittany Drive, East Nashville. I'm the developer for the project. Local Nashville resident, been here my whole life. Got a small development company with my wife and two kids, hopefully, one day. But just wanted to reiterate some things that Jeff had said. You know, we've had two meetings with the community. One was informal, was with immediate neighbors. The next was formal, and Councilmember Rutherford was involved in that, got up and spoke, and we had a good turnout, twenty or so members there, or community members there. Couple of things that were brought up in that meeting that we addressed on the plan was to bring down the density just a little bit. One of the concerns was the neighbors to the south and just the the townhomes that were close to their property, so we removed those. We changed up, we mixed up the product type, we added the cottages, and then, like Jeff said, no rentals and larger buffer, which we've done too. So, you know, we've been working on this since like last October. A lot of time and effort went into it, and we always want to make sure we're a good community member, because we live here, we play here, and we want to be here our whole lives, so hopefully you guys can support this development. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Well.
Hi, Twana Chick, Cambridge Community Club. It's hard to sometimes put things in words, so I just wanted to provide that visual of the developments going on very close to this one, and that will inform you a little bit about some of my comments. We're asking for a deferral to meet a few additional conditions on this one. As he said, garages and storage, it's the ability to store things more than just the vehicles, because if families are coming in, they need to be able to get trampolines and playhouses and things like that in a storage space somewhere so that a vehicle can go in the garage, and that leads to a reduction in crime. Traffic, that's the reason I wanted you to see this. All those blue areas are ones that are coming, and that big black line is Old Hickory Boulevard, and then the purple one is Metro's planned Collector Road. And so we're looking at a zoomed-out picture, and I know all the developers are usually looking at a much narrower picture, but we want to make sure, again, that the easements and the connection and everything exist in a way that works in twenty years. We don't want to have to redo this, and we don't want structures built where we can't then expand the roadways. So we're asking for easements at least to be set aside so there could be a traffic circle in the future at the Metro Planned Road, because what Metro NDOT tells us is that if we don't do that, then we end up with traffic lights, and we don't want to be a community of traffic lights. We want to be a community of traffic circles. We've been told they cost Metro much less to install and to maintain throughout the years, and they move traffic better. The invasives management, I would say to that that Percy Warner and Edwin Warner Park can remove them from all the slopes, and this slope is no more than nor is it any less height than the one on Cambridge Road where they're agreeing to remove those. So we want that done on the whole property, and we want that kind of plan moving forwards in the future. We've talked about rental buffers for the neighbors. This property goes up, 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 and it is completely wooded right now, so I think it started at two minutes instead of five. And so it is, when you look out the back door of those, you're going to be looking up at forty-eight foot plus the forty-something feet that the property goes up anyway, so we're concerned about having a larger buffer to preserve some of the trees that are sixty-foot tall that will be a visual buffer for the neighbors. We want them to agree to a condition of working on the community with additional standards that include this invasive management. We want to point out the large loss of trees. Right now, it's a hundred percent forested, and where they talked about the undisturbed being left, just a point of clarification, what they're not disturbing is mostly what they can't disturb, because it drops down to a creek, it's the headwaters, a sinking creek that goes into Mill Creek, and then at the top of it, it's an extremely steep slope. So it's the true undisturbed aspect that we look at, and that's only seventeen percent on this. And again, going back to the Cambridge Road site, that one is almost forty percent true, true, undisturbed, which is amazing. So those are our asks, especially the traffic, the big picture, looking at easements and making sure NDOT agrees that nothing better can be done with this. We're asking for a connection to Old Hickory Boulevard. We previously asked for it on the Cothran property, which is the one two properties over. If it doesn't happen here, it is our last opportunity near to this Collector Road to have that occur ever. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, rebuttal?
Thank you. The biggest comment regarding the traffic is we have worked in great detail with NDOT on this plan in terms of the connectivity to the east, to the Collector roadway that is on the major collector street plan. I understand the goals of the community in looking at and replanning roadways, but I think NDOT needs to buy into those, because NDOT asks for us to be respectful in terms of our entry points. We have the the entrance onto Old Hickory Boulevard. We have granted connectivity to the property to the north that is currently being studied for development, and we have shown the connectivity to the east that would match the Cothran SP in where they have a stubout. And that roadway on the Cothran SP, which is the one that Ms. Chick referenced, it shows it as a collector north-south roadway. That is where the traffic circle should be. That's what NDOT has on the major thoroughfare plan. So we are abiding with what NDOT has asked us to do. I certainly understand the community looking at new ideas and new roadway corridors, but I think they need to be reaching out to NDOT and planning those ahead of this time. Regarding the buffer to the south, I think staff can certainly confirm that we have worked diligently on increasing that. At the very narrowest point you can see on the plan, it is over thirty feet and goes up to a hundred feet of undisturbed depth to our units there. So my old adage is that about fifty feet of natural tree cover, you cannot see anything on the other side. We are more than that over the majority of that southern boundary and have committed to a wooden fence being on that buffer. So with those things in mind, we ask for your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And the councilmember's not here. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Leslie, it's your turn to go first. She's hot.
I see was deferred from a couple of meetings. What was it? Why was it deferred?
Excuse me. So this is the first time that you're actually hearing it. It's not unusual for, as we're working through especially large SPs that are complex, it's not unusual for the notice to be sent out just a little bit before it's exactly ready to be on the agenda, and so then you'll see a few deferrals. So we start putting it on the agenda anytime notice is mailed, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. So I don't see, I understand objection and so forth, but I I see some very well-thought-out plan, and I'm prone to go with what the staff recommends.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? May Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Dundon, sure. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I have a question, because on the last or one of the other ones we did, there was a condition about tree preservation that I actually really liked, and I was wondering if, especially in a lot like this where you've got, it sounds like it's mostly forested, so a lot of these are, these trees are there, they're not going to be planted. Can you maybe, you know, is this a condition we could add here that would, you know, enhance the likelihood of these trees making it? Or is there a reason you put it in the other one and not in other lots where you've got tree preservation?
I think you certainly should, I think you certainly could include it. I will tell you that if a preliminary SP is approved and it indicates areas for non-disturbance, we will then with final site plan ensure that tree protection fencing, and that's what that condition calls for. We do automatically check for that even without the language. You can include it, but yeah, just to assure you that staff already looks at that with final site plans.
Okay. Great. Then, yeah, and I do think the the objector made an important point about the long life of infrastructure. I think that is something we definitely think about when we approve these things, and, you know, this needs to be something we're comfortable with for years to come, and I am. I think it does meet policy. I agree with Commissioner Leslie, and I would vote to approve.
Any other discussion? So we'll need a motion, Commissioner Dundon or Commissioner Leslie? Want to, Commissioner Leslie or Dunn?
I make a motion to approve with the staff recommendation, approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Commissioner, you'll have to do it on your microphone, so we get the record. That was a perfect motion. It just we didn't have the microphone.
I make a motion to go with the staff recommendation to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and it's approved. We are now on to. Thanks. Thank you, everybody, for coming down. Appreciate it. All right, so. We are on item number eleven. Okay. Give us one sec, a few seconds.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jeremiah, presenting item number eleven on the agenda tonight. This is a request to reason from single-family residential to specific plan zoning for property located at forty-three twenty-six Maxwell Road to permit forty multi-family residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The approximately three-point-eight, three-point-eight-three acre site contains a two-story single-family residential structure. The site is located approximately hundred-and-fifty feet south of Three Water Drive. The site has frontage on Maxwell Road, which is classified as a collector avenue in the major and collector street plan. The surrounding zoning districts include single-family residential, agriculture residential, and specific plan. The subject site abuts an SP to the east that was approved for single-family residential uses, which has developed with smaller lot sizes. The plan proposes forty, forty multi-family residential units. Units one to eight are grouped in pairs oriented towards Maxwell Road. Units nine to four are in groups of four. The proposed units share access through a private drive from Maxwell Road. Units one to eight are proposed in three stories to provide a transition from Maxwell Road to the internal units, which are proposed in two stories. The reduction in height internal to the site is intended to better transition to adjacent single-family residential homes that have been developed with lower height. All units are proposed with pitched roof forms. Units fronting Maxwell Road are detached in pairs to mimic the surroundings. Approximately twenty percent of the site is being maintained as open space. Sidewalk connections are provided on Maxwell Road. Per the MCSP requirements, the plan shows a six-foot wide planting strip and a six-foot wide sidewalk along Maxwell Road. As shown on the site layout, a twenty-foot type-C landscape buffer is proposed along the property line to buffer against the lower intensity land uses. The subject site is located within the suburban neighborhood evolving policy area. T-three any policy areas are undeveloped and are developed as suitable for substantial infill and redevelopment and are anticipated to be developed in suburban residential patterns, but at higher densities with greater housing variety than classic suburban neighborhoods. Staff reviewed the proposed plan against the T-three policy goals. The proposed plan is consistent with the T-three any policy goal to allow for higher density with greater housing choice. The plan proposes a multi-family residential development that would provide additional density and housing options. The plan introduces a new unit type in the form of attached townhomes, which will add to the overall diversity of housing choices in the area. The proposed SP would permit forty multi-family residential units at a density of approximately ten point one unit an acre, which is within the range of density supported by the T-three any policy. The proposed height of three stories for the unit fronting Maxwell Road and two stories for the internal units is consistent with the policy guidance of one-to-three story buildings. Units one to eight are proposed in three stories to provide a transition from Maxwell Road to the units at the rear, which are proposed in two stories. The reduction in height internal to the site is intended to better transition to the adjacent single-family residential homes that are lower in height. The site has frontage along Maxwell Road, which is classified as a collector avenue in the MCSP. The proposed sidewalk along the frontage of the site will help continue the existing sidewalk connection to the east of the subject site and enhance the pedestrian environment and provide alternative modes of transportation. Staff finds that the plan meets the goals for the T-three any policy and recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And so commissioners, we'll open this item up for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome. You have ten minutes. State your name, and you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, planning staff and planning commission. My name is Jody Roberts. I would, I will be the developer of the subject property, forty-three twenty-six Maxwell Road in Antioch. As he shared, it's a, it's roughly a four-acre site. It's a flat rectangular site. Obviously, it's got water sewer to the site. It's currently zoned RS ten. We're proposing a rezone to an SP, also proposing a maximum of forty townhomes on the site. As he had shared, the, I think it's important to know that the the townhomes facing Maxwell will be three stories. They'll have two-car rear garages, and then the inner townhomes, the thirty-two townhomes there, will all be two-story with one-car front garages, and those garages will have an additional space outside the garage for parking. The community, it does have a private drive off of Maxwell Road with a Metro standard cul-de-sac, so it's easy for fire trucks, ambulances can easily easily access and enter the site. So it's easy for fire trucks, ambulances can easily, easily access and enter the site and exit the community as well. As I mentioned, there's a total of 104 parking spaces. That's roughly 2.6 spaces per townhome. I think it's important to also know that these townhomes will be for sale. So the majority of them will be a buyer's primary resident. They're going to range from 1,500 to 2,000, or 1,900 square feet, three-bed, three-bath, one or two-car garages. The price point will be affordable. It'll be $330,000 to $399,000. I did back in February, initially, I think it's important to know that I applied for a rezone to an RM15 for a total of 56 townhomes. Met with the councilman, Deonte Harrell. He said, hey, let's get a neighborhood meeting. I said, for, for sure, let's do that. So I met with the neighborhood on February 27th and listened, shared with them my proposed plan. Their concerns were density, blasting on the site, parking, and traffic, and then they also had an overall concern of safety and security. Well, density, and, and it was obvious from what they were sharing with me that they would like for me to go back and re-modify it to an SP. So I did that, got with my engineer, and we worked up a site plan. So we reduced in the density from 56 townhomes to 40. Blasting, we've already, I've worked with my engineer. This site, the topography on the site is an import condition, which means we will be bringing in dirt into the site. Therefore, there's not going to be any type of mass blasting that's going to be needed on the site. Traffic, no traffic study's been done. Metro's cutoff for traffic study is 75 or more units, so we're not even close to that. Also, there were some adjoining neighbors that, that to the, on the three sides of the property, west and east and north, that had some concerns. We're going to have a, you know, a landscape buffer there, so I think that, that'll give a good buffer between us and the adjoining neighbors. And also, I think it's important, planning agrees that my plan is consistent with the T3 neighborhood evolving goal to allow for higher density with greater housing choice. The plan proposes a multi-family development that would provide additional density and housing options. The plan introduces a new unit type in the form of attached townhomes, which will add to the overall diversity of housing choices in an area which is predominantly single-family. Also, the T3 NE areas are anticipated to be developed in suburban residential patterns, but at higher densities and with greater housing variety than classic suburban neighborhoods. And so I believe that this plan is consistent with the policy as it introduces some form of density. So as, as I shared, I feel like I've, you know, really addressed their concerns. We reduced density. Once again, there's no garages facing Maxwell Drive. We've got a good transition with three-story down to two-story. We've got a great landscape buffer. We've got plenty of parking, 104 spaces. So I just appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Seeing, oh, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, come on up. If y'all will line up behind the microphone, that would be great. You've got two minutes and please state your name. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I am Carleen Castleman, a seven-year resident of Trailwater Drive, which directly borders this property, so this is essentially going into my backyard. I'm also a rare native Nashvillian, if there's any of y'all here. So in the last four years, 821 single-family homes have been built within a half of a mile of my home and this site. With no upgrades to roads, schools, or emergency services, this small area is overloaded and residents are paying the price. At a recent District 33 meeting, Police Commander Lovell said crime has doubled in Antioch due to new developments in the influx of people and warned that Metro Police staffing has not increased. Metro Fires Mark Young said Antioch now has the highest call volume in the county with no staffing growth in over 28 years, making it very difficult to meet national response time standards. That's not a concern, that's a public safety failure. This rezoning would cram 42 and three-story townhomes into 3.8 acres, some as close as 20 feet for mine and 12 other homes that have already suffered damage. The property likely sits on rock, making blasting unavoidable and dangerous. There are no other townhouses anywhere in this neighborhood, and they would tower over existing homes. They are not compatible with the neighborhood, they are invasive. The T3 NE plan calls for context-sensitive, environmentally sound growth. This project violates that by ignoring the surrounding community standard, destroying, destroying natural land, removing privacy, and adding stress, noise, and risk with no benefit to the people who already live here. You're being asked to approve a project that... Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some visual items. I was told I could set them up. I didn't know that I needed to send anything in to you guys.
That's, yeah, where, are you setting them up right here? Yeah, that's fine.
I also have, I'm speaking on behalf of the community, so I've got other people's forms.
That's fine, we'll, we'll put it in the record.
Okay.
So this beautiful little picture in front of me is the land that's going to be developed. The, and of course, this is just our backyard and things like that. The, the zoned, the zoned elementary school, high school, and middle school for this area are actually at capacity. Mountain View is at capacity. Antioch High School is at capacity, and JFK recently had to move fifth grade to Mountain View. So they're, they're completely at capacity with portables. So we've had an increase because of all the growth, we've had an increase in traffic, crime, all that. Motor vehicle accidents have become a real issue at an intersection that the majority of people have to come and go out of. Just as she mentioned, the police, am I at five minutes or two? Because I'm speaking on, I'm so sorry.
Hold on, let's stop for a second. So generally, our rules require that you, did you submit?
Yes.
A pre-approval for five minutes? Are you, do you represent? How do you represent the owners? I mean, other households? Is it a neighborhood association?
Yes, it's a neighborhood association, yeah.
For the record, can you state what neighborhood?
The Max, Maxwell Flagstone, Trail, Trailwater. Pepper Tree Forest.
All right, give her four minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
The communities nearest Davenport Downs, Heritage Landing, Percy Cove, and Oliveri Cove all have used three to four homes per acre. That's what we look at. That's actually what Pepper Tree Forest is. Development for 4057 Maxwell Road is also using three units an acre. Another one right down the road at 4258 Maxwell is also using three to four an acre. The following concerns that I'm about to voice are very near to me because I grew up in Tennessee. I get to see greenery, I get to see hills, I get to see all the beauty that we can just take for granted. When we first moved to our present home, we were surrounded by core land that was beautiful green and full of wildlife. It's mostly been developed, but we have a beautiful tree line behind our house. We witnessed coyotes, deers, oddly enough, a peacock that came out of nowhere. The constant construction and clearing of land removes the vegetation, the forest, sensitive areas. Roadways and development break up the wildlife corridors, isolating populations, and hindering migration patterns. Thus, we had seven deer run across a major Davenport Downs because they're just out of, of their element. The destruction of the habitats can lead to the decline or the extinction of this species, impacting the overall health of ecosystems. The, all the construction that we've had over the past seven years releases dust, particle matters, exhaust emissions into the air impacting air quality and human health. People around us have COPD, emphysema, asthma. Bringing in these particles has not been good for any of us. Construction sites introduce chemicals, sediments runoff. And we are right near Percy Priest Lake, which leads into the Cumberland River. The construction activities generate noise, wildlife, people, quite honestly, with PTSD, TBIs, and even some heart conditions can be affected by those things. The production and the transportation of building materials, as well as the construction process itself, generates significant greenhouse emissions. The trucks break the roadways and travel at ridiculous speeds up and down the road. The construction projects themselves lead to a large amount of waste, which end up in landfills. And Nashville is already experiencing some issues with Middle Point and Southern Services landfill. The conservation of natural land in housing developments can lead to the loss of agricultural land, soil erosion, and contribute to heat islands and increased storm runoff. Construction activities can lead to soil erosion and compaction, reducing soil fertility and impacting water infiltration. The new home development can significantly alter our neighborhood's character by changing its physical appearance, demographics, and overall sense of community. Davenport Downs becoming rental homes significantly changed the dynamic of our neighborhood. I do feel that our reasonable expectation of privacy in our enclosed backyard will be violated due to the close proximity of the homes and being able to look over into our property. The size of the homes will also direct, redirect, well, will lose some sunlight because of how large the, the, the homes are. And I just strongly urge you to kind of give this some thought. As far as the plan show, we'll lose all this greenery. It'll all be gone. And I think it's important, and I've heard you guys say it several times tonight, that it's good to have green spots and to, to keep, just keep it pretty. But also, this right here is all the development we've had over the seven years in all those Davenport Downs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And just, we'll keep the visuals up. So we don't... We'll keep going.
Jason Smith, I live on, behind the house as well, or behind the property.
Hold on, hold on, sir, we got to start the time. Sorry.
Oh, you're good.
There you go. Start over.
All right, so I live, my, my house backs up to the property as well. The problem I have with it was, we haven't had anything with our council member. February 27th, we met on this meeting, had a discussion with it. It turned into a very large yelling match about this property and the stuff that was going to be done with it. The yelling match almost started here in the, here when y'all went to lunch a little bit ago. The guy left. He's not here anymore. He's the one that was going to buy the property. The issue with this to me is the road is not big enough. Right now, a school bus goes down Maxwell Road, you have to pull off the road so the bus can pass you, because the road is not big enough, and we've already put in over 800 houses on our street. I'm not saying this is a no. I'm saying right now with the property and the way it is, we're not, it's, it's not safe. We've had a car totaled because somebody ran us off the road going down that street. You have buses that have been hit. You have cars being broke into all the time. They're wanting to build low-income houses, as they like to name this, at 330,000. The people that are going to come into those houses, we're going to have more problems. You can go down our street right now and see windows busted out everywhere. No help, cops don't come, police do not come. Now you're asking to put townhomes in an area we do not have. It doesn't look further than, it does not look good in the area. You're putting in houses, we've all got probably about 0.75 acre or so in our house, and here you're wanting to put 40 houses on three acres. From sitting here for the last four hours, every one of these has been 50 acres, 100 homes. 45 acres, 60 homes. Now we're looking at three acres and 40 homes. Same size, 1,500 to 2,000 square feet, same size house, we're looking at three acres and just as many homes as 40 acres. The whole, the whole, all this land right here is going to be torn up. They didn't have any, they've not met with us one time to discuss keeping a tree, saving a tree. All they're wanting to do is tear everything down, bring in, bring in dirt. You're talking about, they're, they're now, tonight, said they're not going to blast. February, they were going to blast. We're not even getting the same story now that we got in February. Our council person won't return any of our phone calls. So we, we're asking for your help. We're asking for someone to, to give us some more time for them to work on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up, welcome.
Good evening. I speak loud, I may not need this mic. Is it possible to pull up the previous slide that you had up? Keep going back. That one, yeah. Go back again. Yeah, maybe, that's fine. Hello, everybody. Good evening. I'm Brenda Smore, one of the residents on Flagstone that is on the west side of this adjacent property. So this property is one of the last ones left to have any green space at all, because everything that you see has been new development around us. There are no townhomes in this area. Our concerns are the increased number of families with children. So as a former Metro Nashville Public School teacher at JFK in our neighborhood, I taught at our neighborhood middle school. We were at capacity then. I had six classes, had at least 30 to 35 students in each of my periods. I had six periods. With the increase in families in these homes, you're, we're talking about three bedrooms, three baths. You're going to have at least 2.5 children. There's no room for them in our schools. The road that, that they want to build the homes on, the main road Maxwell here, while they want to build the, the towering three stories with the garages in the back, the new development that we just got across the street with garages in the back, they don't park in the back, they park on Maxwell. You cannot get a fire truck down there. Cannot get, you can barely get a school bus. They're not going to park in the back. And I realize that that's, you know, the, I guess, the autonomy of the person living there. But it is a safety concern. We already have, as has stated before, we already have crime concerns now with that, with the number of families that have moved into our area. Where the property is slated to be built, there is an intersection right behind it that's good for donuts and track racing. We can't get Metro to come out and take care of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we should speak. Two-minute rebuttal.
Now, I remember that neighborhood meeting vividly. Yeah, there was more concern about crime, safety. Yeah, we, we shared with them there, there could be blasting on the site at the time in February. That was before we did any work, any infiltration testing, phase one, before we had a survey. All of that, now that we've had that, I've consulted with my engineer, and we're going to have to bring in dirt to fill the site, which is going to keep us from having to blast. As far as people parking on Maxwell Road, that is a main road. You, I don't know how you can park on that road. But we've got 16 guest parking spaces directly behind those eight townhomes that front Maxwell. You've got the two-car garage, you had eight, and then eight. So there's plenty of parking there. There is a townhome community eight tenths of a mile west of this property, Oliveri Townhomes. There's like 40 townhomes there. So there are townhomes within this community. As far as, we consulted with our engineer that has a plan for water, sewer, and stormwater mitigation. Our plan will conform with Metro stormwater. I think we all know that the standards are, it states that there's no increase in stormwater from the site. If there's a single family on there, it's got to remain that way as far as the stormwater is concerned. Trying to think, as far as, yeah, the parking... Trying to think, as far as, yeah, the parking. I mean, we've got 104 parking spaces. I don't see that as being an issue at all, and I think it's a great transition. And as I shared with you, there will be some brick and hardy board on the exterior of these homes. I think they'll look beautiful, and I think they'll conform to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see the council members, so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner, Council lady, you wanna go first? Okay, Council lady.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you everyone who came out to speak on this project. Can I get one clarifying thing from the applicant? The question about the townhomes, are you intending them to be for sale? And if so, starting at what price point?
Sir, if you'd just come up to the microphone for public record.
Yeah, I intend for them to be for sale 350 to 400.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I'll just start out by saying that we are definitely in need of more single-family options for our residents. We have a unified housing strategy that says we need at least 90,000 units, most, many of which need to be forced or, or single-family options for our residents. We have a shortage of single-family options. And the price point that you named is indicative of most townhome developments, which is still high for a lot of people. So I appreciate the, the idea and the concept for townhomes for sale. However, with that said, I'm having a little trouble with agreeing with the recommendation that this many units on three acres fits the T3NE policy. I have a lot of T3NE policy in my district, and this, this plan would mean, what it says in the report, about 10 units per acre, which in a T3 policy period, it seems just a little bit too dense for me. I would like to see a reduction in the units at least by half. And also, the mention of no trees, no green space. I think if we reduce the units by half, then we can put in some of that green space and trees that is also indicative of T3, T3 policy neighborhoods. So, yeah, I, I have a little trouble agreeing with the recommendation on this one, and I'd like to see a little bit more work on it.
Thank you, Council lady. Any other discussion from the commissioners, commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the applicant, I think when you first stood up, you said the houses would be between 330 and 399. Sure.
Yeah, I think, I said 335 and 399.
And then you just said it would be between what price?
350 and 400.
Which is it?
Probably 335 and 400. They'll be a good assortment, affordable. You know, I wanna make it affordable pricing somewhat in this day and age.
So these are intended to be affordable?
Well, I mean, at this, I would say in this day and age, I mean, with new construction, it's, I mean, at a, at a good price, I mean, in today's market, it's tough. And it's four acres, not three.
So just, so when we start talking about price, you know, so if the director would clarify that we're, we can't base a decision, I'll let the director say it. Go ahead, Director.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted clarification.
No, I know. It just can't be based on.
It's not.
Okay. Directory, but just say it, just so it's a reminder.
We need to, need to base our zoning decisions on land use policy. I know. With the unified housing strategy, I agree. I think Metro and Planning have a greater picture of sort of the needs, and there's program and policy goals, but for zoning decisions, my advice is to stick to land use policy and go from there.
Thank you. I just wanna, you know, we don't wanna get in trouble, you know, we're all trying not to get in trouble. Vice Chair.
So I know we also, in addition to the unified housing strategy, we also have the Housing and Infrastructure Study. And, you know, as long as I've been on the commission, what's happening in southeast Nashville and Antioch has definitely been the epicenter for where we have issues with housing and infrastructure. But I do, and I, you know, we can't hold an individual property owner or project responsible for this. I mean, this is one project coming in where they've had 800 other housing units. So it's not all on this one property owner, but it really raises a red flag for me and to see putting more units into an area where we already know that two of the three schools where people will be fed into are overcapacity. You know, at some point, we do sort of have to say, can we handle that? And how do we balance all of that? I mean, I know that we're talking about land use, but we also can't just create an unsustainable situation where kids that are moving into these schools, that these communities can't go to school. So I, you know, I just kinda wanted to, to raise that. You know, I, I don't know if a deferral is the answer to go the direction that Council Lady Gamble was suggesting on reducing the density. I agree that, that it could definitely be a less dense, 45 feet, even though it looks like there's a lot of new development in this area. It does seem like a 45-foot home would be pretty substantial relative to what's around it, the townhomes. You know, I don't know, this is, this one property is really sort of like just a microcosm of the issues that we're facing in the city, I think. And it's, you know, the need for more density, the need for more housing, but it has to fit into the neighborhoods and there has to be the infrastructure to support it. So, you know, I don't know, again, I don't know if deferral is the way to go or like how we get to that point. I don't think it's a disapproval because I don't think, I do think this meets the policy to some degree, it could be moderated.
I think you're going to get with the Housing and Infrastructure recommendations some of the larger system level answers that you're looking for. And to your point, we can't hold one site accountable for kind of solving all of those systems problems. My suggestion, the staff have given you an evaluation of the proposal against the policy, but it's up to the commission to evaluate that in context with what you hear. So what I would urge you to do, like any other project, is sort of look at our analysis and any other things that you've heard and give recommendations based on what you think would better meet the policy. And we are doing everything we can to deliver good recommendations to council and the commission about the larger systems level issues that you raise.
Any other discussion, commissioners? Any other discussions? Commissioner Henley.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I mean, a couple of things that I've heard, and I've said this a couple of times, I think, in sitting in this chair, that, you know, it's difficult when we have the community, you know, engaging projects from the point of view of, you know, challenges in their public realm. And, and I think it's a similar statement that I think our executive director just stated is, you know, we heard challenges that are already existing, right, before this project is even there. And I'm always mindful to say that, you know, when we make decisions out of the moment and not for what's possible, you know, these are, these are potential homes for families that go away. And I think that's always something we need to be very mindful of. I mean, I heard a couple of things from those who spoke in opposition and just from other things that were stated earlier that it seems like at least this development was taken into consideration. We heard that a lot of challenges with crime have been with, you know, parking on the street and not having certain places to secure belongings. And every unit seems to, you know, account for that here. You know, if Maxwell is a major street and it's having challenges with parking, I do think those are council member-level conversations. And I think there's obviously some opportunities to improve it because it's, it's a real lived experience. We're hearing it. We heard someone say, "We want help," right? I mean, that was an actual statement, right? So I think those are things that just need to be heard at this level, but also at our, at our council level. And then, you know, we do have programs, and I think this is an opportunity to talk, well, maybe not this specific setting, an opportunity to talk about those, but to engage applicants and, and find opportunities with communities specifically around housing and infrastructure. We have a Housing meets Infrastructure Program. This may be a great opportunity for a case study to say, hey, here's how that can be used and have, you know, some type of coming together of this community to say, hey, what can be done to potentially lessen some of those concerns? They may not go away, and again, one property may not solve those. But, you know, if we have someone who is cost-conscious, affordability-conscious, I don't wanna go too far there, Chair, but programs are aligned with that type of outcome to, for the city to support infrastructure that can help with things that are on and off the site. And I think that's where opportunities, specifically for projects like these, are present. And so it seems like there's motivation to try to do things right or in a considerate manner. I think there may be some opportunity to push that a little further, maybe some more time for conversation. But I also think that may come with some benefit to the, to the developer and to the community. So while that time may be taken, I think there might be some, some mutual benefits to, to looking at this through that lens of how can some more infrastructure around this particular site in that corridor come into play? Just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Smith, and then Vice Chair.
Yeah, okay.
Sound like broken record, but mixed feelings. I do think that it is a pretty large jump in density from the surrounding area. Seems like some of the newer ones may be closer to six to seven for the acre. At the same time, it's sort of, everything's a trade-off. I think less density means, and I know this is not a criteria for decision-making, but we're thinking about housing, less density means each one of those homes is probably gonna be more expensive. And we, we have approved, and this body's been present for the approval, of nearly 1,000 homes in this area. And I guess my concern about deferring or disapproving this is, are we taking the school zone, are we not gonna apply the land use policy to the school zone because it's full? And the answer might be, yeah. But I think if we make a recommendation for less density, that, that's something that is either going to be arbitrary towards this person or I guess we're going to change the land use plan, in effect, if not, if not on the map. And that's tough. I mean, one of the neighborhood evolving criteria is that we are trying to get different types of homes. So the fact that it does not meet, does not look like the homes that were built 40, 50, 60 years ago is actually sort of by design. And not to say you take it forever, that's a, that's a principle, it can't be applied forever. But I, I have a hard time saying no to this one after we've approved hundreds. Or at least, I, it's, I have questions on, on what the next one is, on, on how we, how we view that, given that, you know, we're, we're, we're saying, hey, we're, we're full here, which, I mean, there are indications that, that it is. I mean, that's what, it's only seven students is what they predict, but it does say that two out of three are, one of them said massively overcapacity. So, I mean, I, I wanna listen to the council and be part of the team. But that, it, it's worrisome to, to jump on the brakes on, on a small project and, and without clear, at least philosophical guidance to ourselves and staff on, you know, how we wanna treat this area. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Any other, Vice Chair?
Just one other thought, and this is just, you know, this is maybe not our purview, but obviously all of Maxwell has been developed in a pretty homogeneous pattern. So one thought I had, and it might reduce the density a little bit, would be just to kind of consider something so that, you know, you continue that single-family pattern on Maxwell and then, you know, you have some of the townhomes behind it, just to kind of keep the whole area a little bit more consistent. So if, if we are contemplating a deferral and, you know, maybe not reducing the density in half, but doing something, you know, that might be something to consider.
Vice Chair, I was actually gonna mention that to myself. I had the same thought. And I think the difference, I think that's a very good thought. And the difference between some of the proposals that we approved had a, had some single-family and also some multifamily in the back. And so I do like the idea of maybe, you know, instead of eight units, you make it, like you said, more consistent with the surrounding. And then I think that it doesn't cut the density in half it, but it does help the community. And we do try to be consistent with the community, and I think that is a very legitimate planning goal. And we've done that consistently with other projects too, where we try to match that front street, but yet get the multifamily in the back. I do like that idea, Vice Chair. And so, any other discussion? Commissioner Dunn.
I just wanted to make a comment that a lot of the comments that I heard from the audience today are really true, which is that development does cause environmental impact. You have more traffic, you have more emissions, you have trucks, you have more weight on the roads. All of those things are true. And, and to Commissioner Henley's point, they're sort of the more existential council-level things that potentially could be addressed by a different body. And so here, we certainly think about those things, but, you know, to put it as, I think, as Commissioner, Vice Chair, for our said, to put it on one, one parcel. And, and I think the map that we brought up, and I think several of us are looking at, really shows that the development is really, this, this is one of the few parcels left that are that large and not undeveloped. So it, it does sort of lends, I think that that's maybe what's causing some of the strict scrutiny that, that we're, that we're applying to this. But I, I agree, I think the, I think it does meet the policy and the housing concerns are grave in Nashville right now. We've heard that from many different reports. So to me, that weighs heavily on the factors that I consider in these types of decisions, especially where it meets the policy. So with that said, I'm, I'm happy for, for a deferral if that's where we're gonna go to see if we can address some of the issues.
One last thought too is, since the housing types are different in the back, and I know there's a buffer, but maybe have the staff, if we do defer, look at the, the buffer being a little more, just a bigger, or have the staff look at it. Because I don't know exactly the, if the staff could look at that. And so I think two things for me is the houses on Maxwell matching the other housing types and then the buffer. For me, that's just me personally. Any other discussion? Vice Chair, do you wanna make a motion to defer, but that the staff look at maybe those two things?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we've deferred everything to meetings.
Well, let's check with, let's check with the staff because, you know, we, we're, we, we, so if we did a one-meeting deferral, it would be July.
Lisa, has there been filed?
No, there's not currently any legislation.
Do you think the staff could accomplish what you're hearing in one-meeting deferral? We've gotten some, we've gotten some pretty direct feedback.
Yes, looking at, looking, and make sure that I'm repeating back what I'm hearing, looking at the form of the units along Maxwell Drive to be more consistent with existing units along Maxwell Drive, and then to evaluate the buffers and potentially increase those around the edges to better buffer the multifamily. Yeah, I, I, yes, I think we can achieve that in, in one defer, in a one-meeting deferral.
And if we can't, we'll defer again if we need to.
Okay. Well, then I will make a motion that we defer this item for one meeting to address what Lisa has just outlined.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? There's a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Ayes have it. It's deferred to one meeting. All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming down. We appreciate it. So, let me look at my notes here. All right, so. Yeah. Thank you for bringing the visuals. That very helped. Well, if you wanna leave the, the one with us for the record, or you don't have to. That's fine too. We, we keep lots of paperwork, so. But if you want to keep it, that's fine, too. We have the other documentation, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sir, is it, is it?
How do you get ahold of your councilman, like to have them actually return phone calls to you?
Okay, so we'll have the staff talk to you, okay? Because they'll help you out. And then we'll figure that out. The team will help you. And we do appreciate you all coming down. All right. So let's see here. Hold on. I gotta look at. So we're on item fourteen, and sometimes at this late hour, we, we do have folks that that leave or they've resolved their case. So we'll just ask before we start the rest of the cases. On item fourteen, are there still folks here that are objecting? Yes? Okay, perfect. I'm just checking. I want to check. You guys have stayed here a long time, so we definitely want you all to speak. So, all right, item fourteen. We appreciate everybody coming down. We're in it together.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeremiah Rans again. Yes, I'll be presenting item fourteen on the agenda tonight. This is for the Heritage Creek Phase Five. There is a related case, which is item fifteen on the agenda for Heritage Creek Faces, and I'll be presenting both. So as a reminder, the Commission will have to make separate motion on both items. This is a request for final plot approval to create thirty-five residential cluster lots on a portion of properties located at twelve sixty-nine Hunter's Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve, including the revised condition number six in the memo before you. The subject, the property has been zoned out twenty since nineteen seventy-four. The zoning on the site is not changing. As a reminder of the subdivision process, for plans starting with a concept plan, there are three stages. Concept plan approval by the Planning Commission. The second is the final site plan, and lastly, the final plot. Today's request is for final plot approval. In twenty nineteen, the Metro Planning Commission approved the conditions, a subdivision concept plan for this site, which was originally called the Hunter's Run. The overall subdivision was approved for two hundred and thirty-two single-family residential cluster lots. Final site, final site plan for phases one and two have subsequently been approved. A minor revision to the unplanted portion of the concept plan was approved, the conditions by staff recently. The final site plan was also recently approved. The entirety of the concept plan that was approved in twenty twenty-five is shown here. The section under review is phase five, which is highlighted in red. So as you can see on the screen, the image on the left shows the original concept plan, and the image on the right shows the modification that was approved by staff in twenty twenty-five. With the modification, the stream crossings was relocated, thereby eliminating the need for stormwater variance. Per section two, point two, subsection six of the subdivision regulations, staff is authorized to approve the revisions to the concept plan when there are minor modifications to the plan due to site constraints, as long as there are no substantial changes to the approved concept plan. This plot is for M phase five, part of the related final, part of the associated final M site plan, which was approved recently. The plot includes thirty-five single-family lots, three open space parcels, two new public roads, and the extension of one existing public road. Though it matches all standards, conditions, and requirements of the administratively approved final site plan, the Planning Commission is required by state law to approve this plan because it has more than twenty-five lots. The proposed final plot is shown on the screen. The plan includes extending the existing public road and constructing new, and constructing two new roads. At its March ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the MPC approved an amendment to the rules and procedures reflecting recent changes to Tennessee state law regarding administrative approval of final plots. The amended state law allows staff to approve final plots, and that creates no more than five lots if certain criteria is met, and final plots of up to twenty-five lots for subdivisions that received preliminary concept plan approval. Prior to this change, staff was delegated authority to approve final plots that created no more than two lots. Approval by the MPC is now required because the subject plot contains more than twenty-five lots. Staff previously determined that all requirements of the subdivision regulations applicable to, applicable to this site had been met during review of the final site plan. The proposed plot is consistent with the final site plan, and no changes have been made at all to the plans. For these reasons, staff recommends approval with conditions, including the revised condition number six in the memo before you, and disapprove without all conditions. And so I'll be continuing with the item fifteen on the agenda, which is part of the subdivision that I just presented. This is a request for final plot approval to create twenty-seven residential cluster lots, one open space, and dedicate right of free on a portion of properties located at twelve twenty-nine Hunter's Lane. And staff recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you. And, and so are we finished? Yeah, no, oh, I'm trying to go too fast. Sorry, Jeremiah. They're related.
Yeah, they are related.
Thank you.
The property has been zoned out twenty since nineteen seventy-four. The existing zoning on the site is not changing. As a reminder of the subdivision process, for plans starting with a concept plan, there are three stages. Concept plan approval, final site plan, and lastly, the final plot. This request is also for a final plot approval. As a reminder, the MPC. So then we already approved the final site plan in twenty nineteen. This is the same as what was just presented. And so the the section highlighted in red is a section under review. So the proposed final plot is shown on the screen. This is part of the subdivision that was just presented. Phase five is on the left, and phase six, and phase six is on the right. This is for twenty-seven cluster lots and includes constructing Mystic Creek Drive to the east. This is also the same, the same rules and procedures. And so the same thing, since it is greater than twenty-five lots, approval by the MPC is now required. Staff recommends approval with conditions, including a revised condition number six in the memo before you, and disapprove without all conditions. Thank you.
Jeremiah, sorry I jumped in there too quick. So
That's fine.
I think that it's important to note, as part of the presentation, Lisa, if you could clarify that generally, this is very, very different than a rezoning request that we have been considering, and this is a final plot approval. If you could explain that process so that the viewing public knows.
Certainly. So as the chairman mentioned, this is a subdivision final plat. This is not a rezoning. This is not a change of entitlements on the property. This is actual, actually, as Jeremiah noted, the third phase of a three-step process where the other two pieces have already happened, concept plan approval and final site plan approval. And so this is sort of the last sort of technical piece that has to happen before these plats can be recorded.
And this, this is the last approval body, and it does not go to council, is that? Just remind the commission.
Yes, sorry. That's correct. The Planning Commission alone has the authority over subdivisions through Tennessee State, Tennessee Code Annotated Delegate subdivision authority to you all to both adopt subdivision regulations, which you all have done, and to review subdivision plats, which you all are doing.
And Chair, the only, the only thing I would add is, whereas with zoning changes, we look at policy, in these cases, you're looking, it's a sort of a ministerial analysis against established rules that are already in place.
And this is also something that's somewhat different because of the fact that the state law changed, because I don't remember ever seeing this.
Sure. So prior to the state law change, the state law basically said that staff could approve subdivisions, or, sorry, plats could be approved administratively up to two lots if certain conditions were true. And then it also said that all other plats can be approved administratively if there's a concept plan approval that has come to the Planning Commission. The state law was updated, and it broadened the power of the, of, broadened administrative approval up to five lots, but it also put a limit on the number of lots that could be approved administratively, even with concept plan approval and final site plan approval, which is, is somewhat unusual, just because there is also a state vesting law that state, that sets vesting of properties at a certain point. So a developer is vested after final site plan approval. But then because of the, the limit of twenty-five lots, then they have to come back here for final plot approval.
Thank you, Lisa. And I think that's an important part. So this is relatively new process for the commission, and I just wanted everybody to be aware of why we are considering these. Very good question, and that's why we wanted the explanation to come. I appreciate the staff being so eloquent. Yeah, so we're still on the presentation, really, so maybe, so I, we wanted, we're allowing some leeway, Commissioner, but we'll get into like, unless it's about, you know, the presentation part. What's the question? Okay, I want to make sure we get, okay, okay. All right. But we treated the same public hearing. So, all right. So we'll open the public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? Welcome. Please state your name. You have ten minutes, and you can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal.
I will reserve the two for rebuttal. I don't think this will take long. I don't have a big presentation. But as was mentioned, I'm Wesley Harris with Reagan Smith Associates, and I'm here to request approval of two, two phases of final plats and an ongoing cluster lot, existing cluster lot development. And the two plats comply with the concept plan and development plan.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on it. Two minutes. Please state your name, and we appreciate you coming down.
Hello, I'm Dr. Carolyn Baldwin Tucker. I live at fifteen twenty-one Naples Avenue. I'm here in opposition to us going forward without there being a community meeting. Now, in your staff report, it says that it is simular. So if it's simular, that means it's different. So what is the difference, and what impact could that difference have upon the neighbors that are in adjacent communities? I live in Granvilla. You have changed, someone has allowed, or it has been proposed to change the crossing of that creek, Little Creek. Little Creek floods tremendously. We get the backup water from that many, many times. So any impact that changes from the concept plan, and that it is, and that is a change, from the concept plan could have devastating effect upon those persons who are downstream. Also, that is concern with regard to the fact that we didn't, even though any of the other plans had moved forward, we've not had a meeting. Twenty nineteen was when the concept plan was approved. Subsequent to that time, we've not met with the developers with regard to this. So we did not know the various plans that were there. We didn't know that they had changed. In fact, Goodall was the group that we were dealing with at one point. Reagan and Associates were also still the contractors that dealt with it. But we did not know the other part to it. So when you come in with a change that's simular, it's also different. So we need to know, we need to have opportunity for our community to meet together, to understand what these changes are and how they will, in fact, impact us. It might be small on paper, but it could have devastating effect upon those persons who live in the community. So I respectfully request that you defer until we have opportunity to meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. It's good to see you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. We should have staged a pajama party for as long as we're here. I'm Elaine McReynolds. I live at fifteen seventeen Naples Avenue, which is in Granvilla. It's a subdivision adjacent to this development. And we've been on this development for six years now. So we were really alarmed when we got a notice that it was a zoning change from the Planning Commission. The notice said the shaded areas are about a zoning change. Well, that just kept, got everybody's attention, as you can well imagine. That's why it was nice of you, Lisa, to tell us what the, what was really going on, because the paperwork did not align with what your comments were. Subsequent to that, we finally received the revised concept plan, which really would have been very, very helpful if there had been greater communication, and that's what we're asking for. Defer this, please, and ask the developer to even have a Zoom meeting with us to go over what's different and why it's different. That's all we're asking. We understand the flooding issues, and I'm very sensitive to those. January twenty twenty-three, I drove through Old Hickory Boulevard where the creek, Little Creek, had flooded all the way down Old Hickory Boulevard and had covered the entire road at night. It was one of the scariest things I've ever driven through. That's after the first part of the developments, let alone what's going to happen next. So we have a question about what's happened to that creek stability-wise in the last six years, and whether that bridge up further north really is in the best interest of those of us downstream and further stream, downstream. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on it. Welcome.
I'm a resident of four two two four Granville. That's the main street that comes into our subdivision. The one that you all are proposing are actually parallel to where I live. And my understanding is that they are going to cut a road from that portion into our only outlet of that community, because we have fifty-two or fifty-three houses in there, one way in, one way out. If they do that, we're going to have some very difficult with traffic because of the fact that now since twenty-four and all those areas of the interstate is crowded. So all of them come down to Old Hickory Boulevard. We have difficulty getting out of our neighborhood without additional traffic. And my concern is that that neighborhood has three outlets. We only have one. And that traffic is going to be too congested. We have older people, young kids. It's a settled neighborhood that walks them down the street. The kids plays in the street. And we're asking you to defer this for that reason. It's going to create a massive problem. If they're bringing all their traffic, they're going to have a hard time getting out to. I was saying again, they have three outlets. If they take Hunter's Lane, if they take Del Mir, if they take, if you if they take, um, if you go all the way down to what we call, um, Richard Pike, to Dixonson Road, they have all those outlets. Why would they bring and flood all of that traffic? And the neighborhood has been settled for years. I think you need to reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two minute rebuttal.
The, uh, the representative from Goodall Homes is here and he would like to take my two-minute rebuttal, if that's okay.
21, I'm in Goodall Homes, appreciate your discretion very much. Um, I'll try and be as brief as I possibly can. There's a couple of three things that I'd like to go through real quick. One is it seems as though the public notice caused a lot of confusion. It called a zone change, there's no zone change request, none. This project and this map and this, this that's before you has not changed since 2019. 232 units, no increase in infrastructure, no increase in water usage, no increase in sewer generation, nothing. It does not, and, and so that's important too. There's been nothing, no change, nothing. This project does not connect in any way to the subdivision that those folks live in. That's been another source of confusion. All of this is available, it's public record, they're free to come down and check out all the maps at the planning department, most of them are online. So there isn't any, any impacts to them that weren't already just gone through and recovered and explained during the public hearing process originally back in 2019. And so all we're doing now is asking for the final plat approvals that we get. It's a ministerial process. And I think we have staff that can verify this. It's a funny quirk in the law that's required this to come back to you. We could have split this into three maps and not be here tonight, but we consider that to be subterfuge. And that would have been a very easy process for us to do. That's not the appropriate way to do things in our mind. Is that correct? Thank you. And so you, so that you know that. So this process here tonight, we're just sticking with the same two maps. It's, it's not an issue. This is a continuation of what has already taken place. The roads have been built, this, this virtually in place. We're creating legal lots now. And so we would ask your approval based on that.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, we may have some questions, so we appreciate you being here. Thank you. All right, the councilman's not here, seeing no one else, we just speak, I declare the public hearing. Well.
He's moving fast tonight, Councilwoman.
Sorry, Council lady, I totally bombed that, so I, I, without objection, we're still in the public hearing and so, Council lady, you recognize, I'm totally sorry.
No problem, thank you, Chair, and thank you everyone who came out today. I, I do appreciate the engagement in this final plat process. In, in six years of serving on the council, I've never had this much engagement or any meetings, community meetings regarding a final plat. This project was approved in 2019 before I was elected to the council, but I did attend several meetings that were held by the previous council member about this project before the concept plan was approved. It was not a rezoning at that time, so it did not go to the council at that time. Uh, so those meetings were held as informational for the community to hear about the project, weigh in on any issues that, um, made, that they had about the project or that could make the project better. The project was approved and quite a few homes have already been built. I've, I've met several of the neighbors, uh, in the, in the development. But I think what has been stated is true. The public notice referred to a rezoning. It was an error, I guess, uh, because there's no rezoning in this project. But because of that, that caused a lot of angst and, and anxiety about what was happening. Uh, in addition to that, the staff report referred to a minor change in the concept plan, but it did not describe what that minor change was. Now, I have been corresponding with the neighbors over the last week, getting information from planning to describe what that minor change is. I did send that information to the neighbors. They appreciated that because they did not have, as it was said, a copy of that, what, what the change is. We know now that the minor change is moving the crossing to a location which it appears to be better, uh, because it now does not require a stormwater variance, which is where the crossing was before, it would have required a stormwater variance. Uh, so this makes it more, um, in line with the Stormwater Management Manual. I did reach out to Stormwater today, Mr. Steve Mishu, and I think, um, Ms. Mulligan can expand on this, but he assured, he remembered the case. He assured me that their regulations are being met here and that's why the Stormwater approved it in the plan. Uh, I'll let, uh, Ms. Mulligan speak to any other comments that he may have had. He, he couldn't be here today, I asked that he be here today just to reiterate, uh, what he explained to me. And then what I had also sent to the neighbors in the follow-up message, but unfortunately he couldn't be here tonight and I know he couldn't be here this late. So, um, but he did relay some more information, so, um, I, I do understand the confusion and concern that that confusion has caused, but I feel like the questions and concerns have been answered and addressed. And I'm not sure what having a meeting with the developer would accomplish. If, I think the, the question is, does this meet the Stormwater regulations? And how would this impact flooding downstream? And I don't, I don't know that the developer could answer that. So I, I'm not sure what a deferral for a meeting with the developer would address. But it looks like the.
I see, I can address.
Can we allow?
Yeah, hold on, it, it's okay, it's, we, it was a question, I think, go ahead, sorry.
If you can answer that, please.
We do have, um, Clomar approval from FEMA for that crossing. So, um, they, uh, if it's built as per plan, FEMA agrees per flood study that, that, um, it's in compliance.
And, and also if I, if, if Ms. Mulligan can refer any messages from, uh, Stormwater on, on the issue as well, I would appreciate it.
Certainly, so Steve did, uh, Steve Mishu with Metro Water Services did reach out to me today to let me know that he was unable to attend, but he wanted to make sure that I was able to sort of express to you all and to those in the audience that when, um, Metro Stormwater is involved in subdivision review, with a concept plan, they're looking at it very generally to make sure that there is enough area to meet all of the Stormwater needs. With a final site plan, which is also sometimes referred to as a final development plan, they are reviewing detailed construction drawings. And those detailed construction drawings are everything from, um, retention areas, rain gardens, to pipe sizes and stream crossings. And so they have reviewed those detailed construction drawings for both of these phases in one final site plan and have recommended approval and have indicated that these, that the, that both of these phases do meet, um, all of the requirements of Metro Stormwater, of the adopted Stormwater regulations.
Thank you. You know, I, I, I'm willing to and open to hear what other commissioners have to say, but I, you know, I'm comfortable, uh, moving forward with this plat, with hearing from Stormwater and addressing the Stormwater concerns and also having shared, uh, information about what the minor change is and why that change has been made, uh, with the neighbors. But I will listen further. Thank you.
Thank you, Council lady, and I apologize, very, very helpful. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And, uh, Commissioner Henley, you haven't gone first yet.
Happy to go first, thank you, Chair, for recognizing me. Um, I, I, you know, I, I, I mean, it seems to be an unfortunate, um, situation where, you know, a lot of things have been built, uh, built up based off of just confusion. I think that, you know, something that is highlighted by how we notice things now, a lot of times I think there's some legislation or procedures that are put in place to, you know, give some more opportunities for things to be vetted. But with more opportunities for vetting and things like that, there's also more opportunities for confusion. In this case, I think, you know, hearing rezoning is something that we know all of our communities are, are hypersensitive to at this moment. And so knowing that this community had a, a document that, that brought that to their attention, I understand why they were here and I understand why they had, um, opinions that they wanted to voice. I'm, I'm hopeful that some of the things that were, were brought up and have been presented, addressed a lot of those things that were of concern. And then obviously just detailing, and I think that was the appropriate thing to do, Chair, is just, let's make sure we explain the process and where we are in that stage. But I don't, I don't have anything material to, to, to add. I think the council member did a fantastic job and having the explanation from, from Lisa is, as well has been really helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner, any other discussion? How, I think maybe a motion, seeing no other discussion? Oh, uh, hold on, Lisa?
There are, there are two, yes, there are two items, so we will need separate motions.
Sorry about that, you know, I'm slipping at 8:48, okay, so.
You're doing a great job.
We'll need to do, uh, for, for the motion, whoever's making the motion potentially, Commissioner Henley, will need to do item 14 and item 15 separately. So.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, accept staff recommendation to approve with conditions for item number 14.
That's a proper motion, is there a second? There's a second?
With the, with the updated, um, incorrect conditions that were shared in the memo.
The memo that was passed, passed up. All right, on, and it's, it's, it's labeled items 14 and 15, clearly. That's a proper motion and there's a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Post no, ayes have it, item 14 is adopted. Commissioner Henley?
Yes, Chair, I'd also like to make a motion to, um, accept, uh, staff's recommendation to approve with conditions and referencing, um, the memo for item number 15.
That's a proper motion, is there a second? There's a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Post no, ayes have it, and item 15 is adopted. And so, but before we do that, I do want to say I served on the council with Council Lady Baldwin Tucker. It's good to see you, she's a true leader and inspiration. She helped me as a very young man and it's so good to see you. All right. Thank you all for coming down, very much appreciate it. All right, so. And just so y'all know, that was a long time ago. All right, so. Oh, no, we, we took care of 31, we, we deferred that, so we only have item 32. So the question is, this was previously put on the, it was on the consent agenda and was bumped off. Is there anyone in the room that objects to item 32? Oh, okay. All right, we're on item 32.
This is item 32 on the agenda tonight. This is a request to rezone from specific plan residential to multifamily residential alternative, no short-term rental, RM15, ANS zoning for property located at 712 Meridian Street. And staff recommendation is to approve. The approximately 0.31 acre parcel is located at the southeast corner of Meridian Street and Hancock Street. The property is currently zoned SPR and contains a single-story, single-family residential unit. The surrounding properties are zoned commercially limited to the north and SP to the east, west and south. That includes uses of single-family residential RS5 and detached accessory dwelling units. The property is uniquely located at the corner of.
Hold on one second, let's get a clarification, hold on. What's happening, Director, we gotta.
Jeremiah, we apologize. There's a little bit of confusion. The, it's my understanding that what's in the staff report was, is it in there and it was misnumbered?
This case is in the staff report, starting on page 191. On page 191, it's erroneously labeled as item 33, but it is item 32.
We apologize, would you mind starting over? I'm sorry that you were interrupted, I think there was just some confusion, that's okay. That's okay, sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners, once again. My name is Jeremiah. Presenting item 32 on the agenda tonight. This is a request to rezone from specific plan residential to multifamily residential alternative, no short-term rental, RM15, ANS zoning for property located at 712 Meridian Street. And staff recommendation is to approve. The approximately 0.31 acre parcel is located at the southeast corner of Meridian Street and Hancock Street. The property is currently zoned SPR and contains a single-story, single-family residential unit. The surrounding properties are zoned commercially limited to the north and SP to the east, west and south. That includes uses of single-family residential RS5 and detached accessory dwelling units. The property is uniquely located at the corner of Meridian Street and Hancock Street and has access to an improved alley, adhorthing boundary. The property is located within the T4 neighborhood evolving policy area, which is intended to create an enhanced urban residential neighborhoods that provide more housing choices, improved pedestrian, bicycle and vehicular connectivity, and more way to high-density development patterns with shallow setbacks and minimal spacing between buildings. The site is located along a policy seam with higher intensity urban neighborhood center, T4 NC, to the north and the lower intensity urban neighborhood maintenance, T4 NM to the east and west. Additionally, the site is uniquely situated at the corner of Meridian Street and Hancock Street, which makes it an appropriate location for an increase in density. There is an improved alley along the resting boundary of the site, which gives the site access on three sides. When considering the site's context and proximity to the high-intensity T4 NC to the north and lower intensity T4 NM to the eastern west and the location as a corner lot, additional density may be appropriate at this location. The proposed RM15 ANS zoning district, which increases density modestly, could serve as a transition between the higher-intensity T4 NC policy to the north and the lower-intensity T4 NM policy to the east and west. The alternative component of the requested zoning district requires an urban style of development with the buildings located near the street and parking provided to the side or rear of the buildings. The NS designation restricts short-term rentals from the development. The proposed RM15 ANS zoning increases density modestly on the site and will add to a greater mixture of housing choices as called for the, as called for by the T4 ANE policy. For these reasons, staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? Come on up, you've got 10 minutes, you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal.
Good evening, yes, I will save two minutes. Blake Daniels with Daniels Chandler Architects. A little history on this, we originally looked at this property as an SP with higher density and presented that to the Neighborhood Association. With that, we were looking at seven units and with it being an SP, we clearly had renderings of what it could potentially look like. The meeting went well with the neighborhood, there were some oppositions on the aesthetic, as to be expected in a evolving neighborhood. With very minimal, um, questioning of the density, Councilman Parker was there and kind of reinforced the higher density we were looking at at the time. After the meeting and discussion with the property owner and conversations with Metro Planning, it was discussed that if we reduced it to an RM20, we could probably look at a straight rezone instead of going through the full SP process. probably look at a straight rezone instead of going through the full SP process. So that was the path we submitted on. After continual continual conversations with planning, it was requested that we drop it down to RM fifteen. Uh, RM fifteen reduced it from the six units that would be allowed with RM twenty down to four units when it's RM fifteen. Um, the, and and which we are amenable to. So, um, we feel like we've done a lot to reduce the density within the changing neighborhood. Um, I would like to point out that the property directly across Hancock and kind of catty-corner to it are both commercial properties. One has a restaurant and one's got a recording studio. So we think the density increase while being modest uh is very much in line with the neighborhood.
Thank you, and we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the room wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome. Thank you for waiting and being so patient. After, we've been here five hours.
Um, I would like to ask for four minutes. I am a representative of McFerrin Park Neighborhood Association.
You know, this late at night, we're just gonna do it.
And I've weathered through the storm.
We'll do it.
Okay. My name is Ingrid Campbell. I live, I reside at three thirteen Grace Street. If it's, if you can look at the map with the house, uh, the property that's outlined, I'm around the corner if you head south on the map here. Okay. So my neighborhood likes to um refer to me as the mayor of McFerrin Park. I don't want that title, but anyway. I have been involved with many developments within our community. Number one, some people may be familiar with me, uh, River Chase. I was there from the beginning and three years later. So I learned the art of negotiation. You give some, you take some, you try to work with the developers, you try to work with the community, you try to work with other people and in order to get things done. We succeeded with that. Our latest product, project that we had, um, which was passed through, it was on, it's on Meridian, uh, five sixteen, development of six houses. Great. It's a parking lot, it was blown to the church, fine. We worked with Patrick to come to agreement, planning even, uh, I had a chance to talk with them because some of the design element did not work with the designs in the community. That being, most of the houses are a hundred years old in that immediate area on Meridian. Now, I will go to seven twelve Meridian. Like I said in the beginning, people refer to me as the mayor of McFerrin Park, not a title that I ask. But I do listen to the people in my community. I hear what they say. They'll stop me in the street, they'll stop me walking with my dog. Hey, I got a card on this plan, so some of them are seniors, they're unable to be here. They wouldn't have sat for six, seven hours, but they know if they get my ear, I will come and represent them, and I have. That's why I'm here. Seven twelve, yes, across the street from it directly, we now have Turkey and Wolf. Turkey and Wolf, we just recently had worked with uh Hancock and the councilmen in order to have the no parking, which has existed there for over fourteen, twenty years, removed to work with that commercial property. At the time, when we were proposed, when we were presented with seven twelve, that was not the case. There was still no parking on both sides of the street. So when we were presented with the development, and it didn't, at that time, the rendering did not have parking, it was brought up. The uh response, when asked about the not have, not having any parking was, well, they can park on the street. Okay, noted. So, we asked, well, what about your design? It kind of has angled roofs, roof line. And you had two houses called the sister house in our community, you can look that up, it's known. They're a hundred and plus years old. My house is a hundred years old. The house, two houses next to me are a hundred years old. And the surrounding area kind of replicates the same pattern. And it was like, well, we kind of, we went with the modern house, well, modern commercial building at the corner there for our design. Okay, noted, 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 okay. So, I will work with developers, but they have to also also be cognizant of our community. We worked so hard on that River Chase, and so people are expecting to get and give, but they worked really hard. And to have someone come in and not listen to the community, not observe and understand the land, there's a problem. Yes, we had the meeting. These are things that were stated, and even if it wasn't underscored, I am still hearing it up until today. Are you going? We need to make this a point. We will work with you, but that area is too, we got traffic coming in, we just opened a park, uh, parking for Turkey and Wolf. We're doing so many things to try to make it more friendlier to a neighborhood in the middle of a city. And so with a density at that particular corner, it is an obstacle. We wanted to keep the density on the peripheral of our community where they could easily access Cleveland, they could easily access Dickerson Road. Not in the arterial artery, well, we'll probably have a problems to, um, well, that's that's a concern. Traffic, density, location. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
Okay.
All right. Uh, anyone, I don't see the council member. Rebuttal first, there we go. So, sorry, five hours later.
So I'll be pretty simple on the rebuttal. Um, we're switching to RM fifteen, which is the same zoning kind of underlay in the SP of the five hundred block um on Meridian, so we're matching that. No, we haven't had conversations on the aesthetic of it because it's a straight rezone and through the policies, it's not required. Um, we were gonna have those conversations when we were looking at higher density with the um seven units instead of four. Uh, the intent for parking is clearly outlined in the guidelines um with, within that zoning code.
Thank you, and seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed, and I think Commissioner Dunn, you haven't gone first yet, so. You're the last. All right, lucky you. Go ahead.
Uh, well, first I want to just say thank you for representing the people that you represent and staying here for five hours to do so. It means you really care about your community and that comes through loud and clear, so so thank you. Um, I think, you know, traffic and density and location are things that um we we struggle with on this commission when we have uh those, these types of um complaints from from neighbors about those concerns getting worse that are already, that are already challenging. Um, at the same time, I think you've probably heard from being here five hours, um, we have to compare these to to the policy, and um the policy here seems to be met. Um, I, it it just seems like a a good, um, you know, there was a density reduction that uh, that it sounds like staff worked with the developer to to reduce the zoning um level, and um I'm I'm inclined to adopt staff's recommendation on this one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Commissioner Leslie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to say that I admire you for staying this long. Uh, while we cannot, I think, compel a developer to talk to the community, uh, I think it's probably advantageous to do so. Uh, looks like if this is in compliance with the zoning and the staff recommendation, but I do encourage the developer and it's not, I'm not compelling and the community to talk to each other. And so, that's all.
Well said. I think that it is important that the developer talk to the community, so I think that we always side on that, and I think that it helps, it helps with the development, helps with the phase of construction, and I just think that it just is a good thing to talk to the community. It makes for a better, I think it makes for a better project, quite frankly. So very, very eloquently said, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Vice Chair?
Is this part of the Highland Heights area?
Highland Heights is two neighborhoods up.
Okay. I was just making sure. I know we worked so hard there.
It's close.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Oh, Commissioner Henley?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, in reviewing the the staff report, but also hearing from from the applicant and then also, I can also attest, I've had the opportunity to engage with Ingrid and have been a witness to a conversation being interrupted by someone else who saw Ingrid and decided to interject themselves into the conversation. So I know it happens. Um, I I think there's two things here. I think one is that um the area itself, you know, was was zoned as part of a group of rezonings a while ago to allow for daddos in an area, and I think that, again, was fairly sensitive to the area's context at the time. Lots changed, a lot's happened and evolved. I think it's always interesting, and I think a community reacts, um, sometimes I'll just say not as positively as they could when you go from a potential conversation about an SP. Um, our our community's now been educated for what they can expect with an SP, that level of dialogue and conversation and input is presented to them, and they kind of anticipate going through that process. Um, and then when you migrate away from it, it is usually perceived as you're going to do something that's not as open or transparent when you switch to a straight rezone. So I can understand some sentiments from from neighbors coming from that. I do think that it meets policy. I think that's that's kind of the standard and why we have a staff's recommendation. I think I would echo that, I think there's still some opportunity to to engage the community. But the the corner itself is a very unique corner. Um, I think there is some potential strategies, and I know Ingrid has worked really hard as how to look at that corner specifically around parking and and navigating it. I don't know if there's a need to necessarily condition or look at this site in a certain way, but I do think it's important as we look at intersections like these to potentially, it will sound bad, and then if you have a new context, you may have to undo something else that you just did um around the parking in that area. So I think it would be important to note that this is a material change to a community. It may seem like a small lot, and it may seem like um a small change from from an SP conversation to a to a straight zone, rezone, but that impact is felt, and so I just wanted to know if there is a, any come, I mean, I guess guidance, I would say, from from staff on if you're not gonna have required parking because it's not, it's not required by by policy now. Is there something that has occurred in that community that we should be considering with the street parking?
Um, I think I can definitely talk to my colleagues at NDOT. Um, I think that they are cognizant of um looking very closely at street parking depending on the width of the pavement, because if they're, if the pavement is not wide enough, then they don't want to sort of encourage street parking in a way that it would block emergency vehicles. Um, but if there are areas that are signed for no parking that could accommodate some parking, then I think that that, that that's something that that maybe could look at.
Yeah, I think, I think it's worth it, again, it is a, it has, it has become a commercial corner. Um, it is an intersection, and so there's some safety and some other things I think need to go and to be taken into consideration there, but I'm I'm not opposed to to density there. I don't think, again, I think the comment from earlier, um, the presentation or the applicant's comments was, didn't seem like density was the challenge, it was more of how the functionality and the look fit into the neighborhood, so. But those are my comments. I don't, I don't have any um directives, uh, I think to your point, other than I would just urge to try to keep a conversation going with the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Vice Chair?
I have a question. So based on that, why wouldn't we just alter the SP versus changing the rezoning so that you have some way of looking at some of these issues like parking and making sure that it does work on this corner?
So that is a very unusual SP, the likes of which we do not have elsewhere in the city. Um, so that SP had a very specific person, purpose, which was to permit detached accessory dwelling units. It does not have any other standards. It covers over a hundred acres, I want to say. It's the big one, yes. And it doesn't have any standards for anything except for detached accessory dwelling units, and then it refers back to RS five for all other standards. And so it's not sort of an amendable SP in that way, if that makes sense. Yeah.
All right, I think we're ready for a motion potentially from somebody, from a commissioner? I'll make a motion to approve item thirty-two. That's a proper motion, is there a second? Second, any other discussion? With a strong emphasis on working with the community and looking at that character of that one, that corner. All right, proper motion, second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, eyes have it, and it's adopted. So, that leads us to other business, item H, which is, we've already done item thirty-three, historic. Commissioner Smith?
No update.
No update? Parks, Commissioner Henley?
Do have an update. Um, so I've, I've spoken a lot um in during this uh other business section about the plan to play. Um, the community engagement for plan to play actually kicked off um in in June. There will be one, um, I think there's one remaining open house that is scheduled. It will take place on Saturday at the um Parks Boardroom. Um, it is a great opportunity to engage the community. I'm excited to um see the feedback, the compilation of feedback and the report there. Um, it's an exciting time for Parks, looking at um the future, the next ten years of Parks in in Nashville. So just wanted to make sure that um not only you all, but the public is aware of that opportunity to engage uh this coming Saturday. And I believe the time is at eleven, eleven AM.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Executive Committee, it's not on the schedule, but I do know, I have one announcement for sure, and that is, we do want to say congratulations to Abby for getting married. I think we give her a round of applause. Congrats, we're very proud. Uh, I don't think we have anything else, Vice Chair, do we? No, just one meeting in July, so we're at summer, at, we're summer hours, so, all right. Director, anything?
Quickly, um, note under the calendar of upcoming events, um, in July, we'll have a meeting at Bransford Avenue. That will be um when we are repairing our tech system, so while that's maybe a little inconvenient, we're so happy to the.
Yay, finally.
Technology people and council for funding, technology people.
Yes, thank you, Council lady.
Thank you, Council Lady. That's it.
Okay.
And also, as we get into summer, we limit the meetings to accommodate schedules, but it also means we're limiting meetings to accommodate schedules. So if you can at all come, that is important, and let me know as early as you can if for any reason you anticipate an issue, because that's, we we may need to do special meetings to make sure we are hearing cases and processing them, so thank you.
Excellent. And Council Lady, any update on the council?
Uh, just a quick one, but I also want to congratulate you, Chair, and all the other officers that were elected at the last meeting. In addition to that, uh, we are working, uh, the council is working on the budget, uh, hope to have that approved at our next meeting on June seventeenth, and and after we get the budget approved, we'll be shifting right into the Housing and Infrastructure Study Recommendations, and we're already working on trying to get a joint transportation, planning and zoning meeting scheduled the second week in July to talk about that. So after budget, you all will be hearing a lot about those recommendations.
Thank you, Council Lady, and thank you for that, and we appreciate your service, not only to council, but here at the Planning Commission. Thank you very much. All right, uh, is there a motion adjourned? Adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.